And I have a secondary number if that doesn't work.
We are recording, um, yeah, just saying.
Did we, could you hand me the agenda?
I will.
Thank you so much.
This is Council member.
Hello?
Jake, we're in council.
Yeah.
We're in council and we're live.
Great.
All right.
Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can hear you great.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for being here Jake. All right, we'd like to, um, call our, uh, city council meeting to order. We're going to have a presentation first, um, and we will be hearing from Jackie Coombs from UAMPs, so turn the time over to her.
Thank you Mayor and Council for the opportunity to come and share what UAMPs' platform is, the services that we provide to Kaysville. I know you have, um, we have forty-five minutes, so I'm going to click along as quickly as I can, um, so that we have enough time to go through all of the projects that you participate in. So UAMPs was, is a political subdivision of the state of Utah, so we look just like a municipal, we don't have, um, policing and, um, we have limited policing, we only have intimate domain and we have no taxing authority, but we were formed in nineteen eighty. We're organized to develop, finance, operate both generation and transmission and then provide energy services. We're member-based, um, we have forty-five members and we span six states, um, and we provide energy services on a nonprofit basis. We have sixteen current projects, I know you've heard one about our carbon-free quite a bit, but we're gonna, um, go through the other projects that Kaysville participates with UAMPs. Our projects provide more, um, services more economically and efficiently, providing economies of scale to our members, and that's the reason that we put them together. And when we go through the projects, you'll see you participate in quite a few coal and coal projects, and you wouldn't be able to do that just by Kaysville alone, so. Um, each project is operated independent, um, underneath the umbrella of UAMPs. We're not, and not requirement, so that allows our members to purchase the resources they need from UAMPs. We're different than you, I know our sister organization, Utah Municipal Power Agency, they have six members, you have to buy all your power supply from them. That's not our platform, since we are project-based. Members determine which projects they participate in, and they're not obligated to participate in any project. Each member has, um, chosen, um, to participate in projects, and once they do that, they have to execute the joint action agency agreement, so to be a member, you have to be a public utility, you have to enter into our joint action agency agreement, and you have to at least participate in one of our projects to qualify for membership. So the joint action, eh, agency agreement provides, um, you services through a s- experienced and successful organization. We allow projects of one, so we do have members that have used the UAMPs platform to put internal generation in, we do all the financing, we own the project, and then we contract back with the city to operate it. That allows us to finance it and frees up the municipalities to, to bond for other reasons. So we did, we do allow a project of one, and that's been very successful for us. Each member is allowed to individualize the projects and services they participate in, um, to meet community demands, um, providing you member autonomy. Even if your direction changes in the city, we have provided abilities in our contracts to divest from those, as long as you find someone else to step into those projects. Each project is governed by a contract that, um, that provides the members the rights and obligations. There is no cross defaults from project to project, so if we had an issue in one project, it does not default into another project that you don't participate in, and, and that, that secures so that members have the option just to participate in what they want to. So I know you know a little bit, um, just adopting the, um, carbon-free power project, but all of our projects are governed by, uh, specific contracts, they're provided, and they outline how the payments are rendered. Um, if UAMPs does debt on those projects, um, then you enter into a take-or-pay obligation, and you have a revenue rate, um, requirement, so that means that you have to raise your rates to, to, um, cover those obligations underneath that contract, to pay for debt service, O and M, and willing costs, and that's regardless of the output, so those are the covenants that you do when you enter into those power cells contracts. Participants, um, may elect to bring their own money, they don't have to bond with us, and in lieu of that, they can bring their own money to the table, and all of our bonds are members to stay strong in their electric funds, and, because that's the, the rating that we get on the strength of the members who participate in that project. Power cells contracts are effective, um, what, the first project we'll go through, um, the Hunter project, the bonds have been paid off, but we continue, um, operating that project, um, just, um, until it's fully terminated, um, and no longer is operable. So the budget process, a lot of people ask us how we do our budget, um, well, UAMPs, um, provides a budget for every project, so we actually have sixteen projects that we roll up all, up into one project, but we start with a budget policy, and we, um, do a board of directors retreat, retreat every October, and we talk about principles, how we're going to, um, divide our operations, um, and general, and A and G costs, and how we, they, their goals and objectives on, um, are, how they want the projects operated, any, um, strategic planning and stuff, so we go, we first do a, a, a policy that governs that budget. Then what we do is we put together a budget committee, and the budget committee consists of the officers of the UAMPs, um, the, the Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and Treasurer, and then we have Chairman, um, Chairman of every one of our projects, so those sixteen members also participate on the budget committee, and then they govern their specific budget, budget. The projects are reviewed by a project management committee, and we're gonna go through the governance of that, and then they make the recommendation to the board for the approval for their specific budget, and then they're all rolled up to a comprehensive UAMPs budget. So that's, um, I know you get a copy of the budget every year, and you have a page for every single project that you participate in. So our governance, um, each one of our members, um, are required to appoint a member representative, yours is, um, Bruce, to act on their behalf, and it has to be done by, um, governing board resolution, that's because, um, Bruce does have authority to bind the city to costs, he can, um, participate in, in services and, and other items, and so, um, there are things like the power cells contracts that have to have governance, but not all of those do, so we, we do require governance board approval. Then members elect to participate in the project that we, as we indicated, but then every project is governed by a project management committee, and that project, and that member participates on that project, so, and that's who really controls the project, they control how we operate it, they control the budget, they control financing, so every participant in that project has one vote. Now, um, we, we do a, a simple majority, so fifty percent, or fifty percent of the entitled, um, of the participants, but then also we have to have participant, fifty percent of the entitlement share, so that we wanna make sure that, you know, we're representing the majority of that project. Then, um, the PMC makes recommendations to a project board, so not only do we have project management committees, then we have sixteen board of directors, and, and each one of those boards, we call it a project board, um, is a made up of, um, eleven members, so that if there's less than eleven in a project, such as our Vale, Vale project, that member representative is deemed elected to that board. If not, um, then the, the four largest in that project are deemed, and then the other seven are elected at large. We do our elections at our annual meeting every year, um, and, um, they're four-year terms, and then we roll, um, the different terms so that we're not, um, having all of our governance for each project terminate at the same time. But the, the, the sweet thing is, is that we don't want, since I, the project management committee governs that project, when they make a recommendation to the project board, the board cannot change the, the, um, recommendation, they can only accept or reject, because we want everyone in that project to have a vote, we just don't want eleven individuals to be able to operate the, the project. We wanna make sure that all of the project, that all the participants' interests are, are protected, so they can reject it and then has to go back to the project management committee for further reconsideration. So all of the project boards make up our board of directors, we do have thirty-six currently on our board, board, um, um, the, the general board does policy, they, and leadership of the organization, and they, we do have, um, an executive board, we have an audit, and a budget committee, those are all appointed by the UAMPs Chair, those are also governed under the joint action agency agreement, then we, and our officers are elected, um, every year for a one-year term, and they can't serve any more than three consecutive years. So our projects, um, as I indicated, we have sixteen, um, we're just gonna go through the projects that Kaysville participates in. The first one is a Hunter project, that is a coal-fired power plant, it actually was UAMPs' very first project, we, we formed it because we were being, um, held hostage by, um, Pa- Utah Power in those days, um, so we bought it into it in, um, June of nineteen eighty, um, it's coal-fired power plant, we own into Hunter too, we own an undivided ownership interest in that, it is operated by, um, Pacific Corp currently, under an O and M agreement, and we have twenty-three participants in this project. This project's bonds were paid off several years ago, and it, and it operates very efficiently, we anticipate operating it until, um, the useful life is completed on it. The San Juan project is also coal-fired, um, it is located, um, outside of Farmington, New Mexico, we entered into this, um, acquired it in nineteen ninety-four, we also own an undivided ownership, it's operated by Public Service Company of New Mexico, um, sixteen of our members participate in this project, and this project is, um, slated to go offline in twenty-twenty-two. IPP, I know you're really familiar with this project, Bruce does sit on this board of directors, UAMPs does not own this project, um, but we do, what we do is we handle the excess power cells contract, so when, because it's such a large project, they entered into excess power cells contracts and laid all of that power off to, um, for, um, California entities, what UAMPs does is acts as the agent to do a call, so if you need that energy, you can call it back, and then if you don't need it any longer, you put it back. UAMPs does that because we have a scheduling desk that we can handle the energy if it's once called back, so that's the role that we play in this IPP project, and twenty-three members participate in this project. Colorado River Storage Project is hydro, it's a federally owned project, it's operated by, um, the Bureau of Reclamation, um, it mainly is Flaming Gorge and Lake Powell, but it does have more, um, additional hydro projects behind it in multiple states. Western Area Power Administration's the one that handles the transmission and marketing to fifteen western states. Each member has its own agreement, and they have appointed UAMPs to be a single purchasing agent, so what we do, um, on this one is we operate that, this project was just, we just entered into an extension of this project, um, through the end of twenty-fifty-seven, so that's a, that's a great thing to do, and, um, we have twenty, thirty, thirty, excuse me, thirty-one members who participate in this project. The Firm Power Project, it, UAMPs does its best, we like to do a lot of umbrellas to keep our, um, overheads, um, as low as possible, so this project is a umbrella agreement that we can put multiple projects under that are firm power supply, um, you participate in one of them, um, in this project, we do have, take the output of wind project in, um, Wyoming, um, it, we, it's very small, it's fifteen point six, um, um, megawatts that we take from the project, and we could've had a hundred and forty megawatts, but it was forty-eight dollars a megawatt hour, and it was way too expensive when we got into it, now we wish we had the majority of the output, so, you know, markets change and things change, so I know it'd be nice if we had more wind in our portfolio. We also, um, this contract has a lot of, um, legal on how you pay and what we do if someone defaults under it, so any ma- forward market product that we purchase on behalf of a member, that we pass through directly to them, has to go through this project because the contractual terms are stronger, um, buying from market product any longer than a year, and we're gonna go how the pool does it on a short-term basis. The Nebo Power Plant is a, um, combined, um, cycle natural gas project, it can be operated at a lot of different, um, levels, um, it, it can go to seventy megawatts, which is minimum, and a hundred and forty, which is maximum, we operate it to the market, so if we can buy market, it, we look at the fuel cost of this project, if we can buy it from the market cheaper than what we can run it with the fuel on, um, at Nebo, then we buy it from the market and we don't operate this project. It also includes a gas line, it includes transmission lines, it was commercialized in, um, two thousand and four, it was our first project that we solely owned and operated, um, and sixteen participants participate in this project. Horse Butte is also another wind project, um, UAMPs likes to be creative in how we put together our projects, so this project, um, was commissioned for ninety-nine megawatts, we only had fifty-seven point six, eh, megawatts of interest, so that's all we built out, um, it consists of Vestas Wind, um, one point eight megawatt wind turbines, but, um, what we did is we didn't own the project for the first five and a half years, we had an LLC that owned it, that exhausted all of the environmental, um, and, um, tax credits out of this project, then, um, in, in August of, oh, that should be August of seventeen, we actually bought that out on the early buyout, so it reduced our price quite a bit to do that, but, um, so, it's very, we do, try to do anything that's very cost-effective for our members. We have twenty-three of our particip- of our members participate in this project. Vale Heat is one of our newer projects, um, it is located, um, outside of, um, Saint George area, it is adjacent to, um, a Kern River compressor station, it utilizes the waste heat from that project, and we turn, um, we, we heat a pentane that, um, heats the generator, and we get seven point eight megawatts out of this project. It was, um, commissioned in May of two thousand and sixteen, and only seven members participate in this project. How does UAMP, so those are your energy projects, and on an hourly basis, we have to get all of your output that you own into these projects, UAMPs owns the project, we sell a hundred percent of the output to our cities, so you have a position in every one of these projects, so how do we get it from the project outside of, of Saint George to get it delivered to Kaysville? So, um, we do that on a collective basis, and we do have a twenty-four-hour scheduling desk that we do it, um, so we schedule all of the outputs from all of our projects, we match on a, on an hour basis, fifteen-minute basis, and we're going down to a five-minute basis, we match your load and your resources, um, on, on, on that coinc- on coincidental, um, and, um, we do it for the economics of all members, so we don't look at Kaysville's economics and what projects they participate in, we look at it as, UAMPs as the overall benefit to the organization, and then after the fact, you get the benefit of all your projects. Um, inter, um, what we do, if you are excess, um, generation for many of those projects, our power pool buys that on an hourly basis, and if you need, um, power because your peak is higher than your resources, then you buy it back from the power pool on an hourly basis. The dispatchers buy and sell, they, they have to balance the system, um, we get penalized from Rocky Mountain Power if we don't stay within a bandwidth, so they have to, that what they do is read all of the city's meters, they have to guess what the loads will be, what the weather is, what day of the week it is, and then they do a, a load profile, and then they, they have to true that up on, on a, um, they do it on a pre-basis, and then they have to do it on a real-time basis, so they have to do that for all of our projects. Um, we do have to provide this information on a rolling basis to Rocky Mountain Power, um, and we have to include the resource, the transmission, and reserves, and how we schedule it, um, we did go over this, we schedule it on a pre-schedule basis, and then we true it up on a real-time basis. The reason we have to true it up on a real-time basis, a lot of times it's weather, if, if we get a cloud over Saint George that we didn't anticipate, then our load drops, and then we have to sell off that surplus that was scheduled on a pre-schedule basis, or vice versa, we anticipate it a cooler, a cooler day, and, and then it swings to a hotter day. So any given time, UAMP schedulers can schedule in seven different balancing authorities, so we're, they're very active on an hourly basis, with Pacific Corp, um, Energy Northwest, with Idaho Power Company, with, um, Public Service Company of New Mexico, with Arizona, with WAPA, and with Bonneville Power Administration, so they do have a lot to, um, coordinate on an hour, hourly and fifteen-minute basis. So how do we get, um, your power, so now you know we schedule it on a, on a basis for all of the members, but, um, this is Mr. Watt, so meet Mr. Watt, it could be a megawatt, or it could be a kilowatt, depending on how small or large you are in the UAMPs membership. So this is kind of a depiction of where our projects are located, so you can see you own into the wind farm that is in Idaho, and we have to deliver that and get it to Kaysville, you also participate in, you know, this is the depiction of Glen Canyon Dam. This waste heat right here is not one of our projects, um, Murray, since you, we don't have, you don't have to buy power from UAMPs, you can buy it from anywhere, Murray City owns into landfill, and what we do is we schedule it on an hourly basis for them, Spring, Springville owns into a bio, a, a pig farm waste heat, so they, we, we also schedule that, so it just depends on, on what service we're providing to our members. So we don't own transmission, um, we, we actually have a contract with Rocky Mountain Power, and we get, um, so what we have to do is we have to pay them for our usage. We also have three members that we don't use, the Rocky Mountain Powers, um, system, we have to, um, send it on to Nevada, and that, those members are Fallon, um, Truckee Donner, and then sometimes Plumas, so we have to, we have to schedule that into a different BA. So when we operate our power, um, our pool, what we do is we take the, the variable costs on just the variable piece of the resources, or that, when variable would be the fuel and the operations of that project, not any of the debt, so how we do it, when we're doing scheduling for the economics of all the members, we take the, the budgeted rate of those projects, and you can see the budget rate, so what we do is we put those prices into the power pool, and that's how we, um, do an economic dispatch of, of those. Some of them, um, have contracted rates, so what we do is we charge the contract rate for CRSP, and then our Pleasant Valley Wind out in Wyoming also has a contract, so we buy it at forty-eight dollars. Some of the members, as I indicated, own their own, so we schedule those, but we don't charge anything to the members, they receive the bills from that entity themselves, so they would be charged, um, directly for the energy, and we just get, we charge just to schedule it. So on a, the hourly purchases, so as I indicated, we have to match, not always, we are really a, a net, a, a net buyer, some majority of the time we have resource needs, so we have to go to the market, and we have to buy economic power for our members to meet those needs, so what we do is we buy power on the market, and every single hour, you can see all those hours are differently priced, we pass those on to the pool exactly at the price that we buy it at. The Nebo Project, and we're gonna talk more about this because I know it's one of your higher-priced, um, resources, but how we, um, we calculate this one is we take the fuel that it's, um, the MMBTU of the fuel amount, and we, on, plus, um, an index gas, we times it by the megawatt hours generated, and then we add one dollar for the operations of it, so when, when we strike it, it, it costs money for the O and M every time we operate the project, so we charge a dollar onto the O and M. So you can see every single, um, day, usually we operate at a different price at the Nebo Power Plant. So on top of that, after we take care of all the, the energy pricing, that's how we calculate our variable, we have delivery charges, so most of these are, um, passed on through Rocky Mountain Power because we do use their transmission project, so Pacific Corp charges us transmission, UAMPs charges all of our members scheduling, and we used to not sked- charge a scheduling fee, we used to just include it in our administrative and general costs, but since we have members that bring their own projects, then this is a service that we provide on their behalf, so we separated it and we charge us, uh, a scheduling for all of our resources so that we can pick up those third-party, um, resources that we don't own. We also charge a reserve charge, which is also a pass-through from, um, Pacific Corp, and then we have losses. So this is the transmission, um, so if, if you had a, a megawatt, does not matter where it's coming from, we charge a, a postage stamp, so it doesn't matter where a member's located, we gather all of our costs, and then we, through the budget process, we do a, 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 a stamp, a postage stamp rate, so as you can see, um, we'll back that up, we charge six dollars and five cents to deliver anything on the Pacific Corp system, so it does not matter where the generation comes from, whether it comes from the wind farm, whether it comes from Saint Georgiary, you get charged six dollars and five cents for that transmission. However, on WAPA, you, um, we don't charge for any of the hydropower, 'cause the hydropower, the rate is included, the transmission is included in that, so you don't get additional charge on your, um, your federal power. Then reserves, what are reserves? Reserves are kind of like, uh, insurance policy, in case that, we lose that resource and someone else has to cover it in a short period of time, so, um, we, we charge, um, resource, uh, reserves, excuse me, reserves on our generation, um, members that own their own generation can provide that themselves and, and forego this price, but it, it definitely is just, uh, as, an insurance to make sure that that product is delivered correctly. This is a fairly new thing, we probably had it for the last five years, and it was done through a, a, a federal regulatory commission, a rate hearing. So then how do we schedule the, um, the UAMPs, how do we depict our scheduling fee? We take, most of our energy is, um, scheduled to load, which is a project that UAMPs would own, um, as we indicated, the, the dispatchers are very busy on having to match load every single hour, they have to do transmission, they have to schedule in different BA, so we take every resource, we calculate what time is necessary for them to schedule it, and then we come up with a scheduling rate based on the number of employees that we have. The Colorado River Storage Project, since we don't have transmission, it's already delivered, we charge a lower rate for that, that project at only, um, thirty-five cents a me- a megawatt hour. And then the MEGs, they, that's internal, um, MEG stands for member internal generation, so some of our members own diesel gen- I mean, gas generators behind the meter, and we also charge those, that used to not be a, a scheduling charge, um, but now we have to schedule those with, um, Pacific Corp as well, so they have to know if they're coming on, they get reserve charges, et cetera, just because if we lose that resource, um, Pacific Corp is required to pick that load up. And then anything that we sell off system is, um, also charged a dollar for, so if we have to sell surplus resources of Kaysville's, we charge them a dollar for to schedule it to load, but then you get a credit if we sell it off system, so that you're not being charged twice for that, that scheduling fee, 'cause then anybody we sell it to off system would, um, pay for that. So this is a transmission line, and, um, that is your watt going along the transmission line to be delivered to Kaysville. But on top of it, um, what happens when we're on the transmission line, then we have losses, so that's the difference between what we schedule and what is delivered, so that is a calculated amount, um, from Rocky Mountain Power, we lose four point four five percent of that energy when it go, it's going across the transmission lines, so what we schedule and what you, what we deliver to you is not the same amount. That, and this is for the Pacific Corp system, so that losses is four point four five percent. However, as we indicated, you don't get a fee for transmission for, from Western Area Power, which is our hydropower, but their losses are calculated higher at six point three, eight, three percent, so you get less power when you get it at the gate at Kaysville than what was delivered onto the system. In addition to that, you also have losses inside of your own system, so, um, some members do not, I don't know if Bruce knows what your losses are calculated here at Kaysville, but that can be as low as three percent, but we, we have someone right now at nine percent, so, but some don't have any losses, they, they have, um, loads that are more twenty-four hour, uh, around the clock, and that, um, your capacity factor stays higher, and you have a lot more, you have less losses at that time. So, it's, so you'd have to calculate those resources, um, that, that loss amount for the power that you deliver to your end-use customers, so you get your energy costs, your transmission, your scheduling, your reserves, your losses, and then you, then that's what you get to deliver, but, um, to your, um, consumer. So what we do on an hourly basis, as we, I indicated, is every single project that you own, we schedule, and you get that amount of energy, then if you have too much energy, the pool buys it, but if you don't have enough energy, you have to buy it from the power pool, and, and we do this on a fifteen-minute basis. This is just another depiction, so this would be all of the UAMPs resources, how we economically dispatch them, this would just be a day of the, of the, um, one day, and so this is what the low curve looks like, it's lower in the morning, goes up in the, in the afternoon, and then back down, so we, this would be what we'd pre-schedule, um, anything above this line of UAMPs, we, that's what we have to, to sell off on a real-time basis to a third party, anything up in this red area, we've had to buy from the market, and so we have to do that every single, um, fifteen minutes. So, as I indicated, after the fact, you get every single kilowatt that you own in any of the UAMPs projects on an hourly basis, and so this is what the depiction looks like. Then after we allocate them, then we calculate if you're long or short, will you sell to the pool or you buy from the pool. So that is how the power pool works, you get a credit or a charge for the power pool that you utilize, and you, um, get, get credits for each one of them. or a charge for the power pool that you utilize and you get credits for each one of them. So really, that's what it takes to get your light bulbs or your load on in the city. So... But what does Caseville's load and resource portfolio look like? So I know you've seen some of these graphs when you were considering the carbon-free power project, but this is what an average day of the month looks like. So this would just be an average. You have your resources. So your green is San Juan, which is coal. Your Hunter, which is coal. This right here, this purple color is your Vale project, which is your waste heat. The next project is the Federal Hydro. This pink color is your wind from Wyoming. And then all of this color up here is your NIBO power plant. So you can see you rely on NIBO quite a bit to fulfill your load. Here is the resources when they're terminating. As I indicated, San Juan is turning, is going down in 2022. Your CRSP is extended through 57. So you can, and we lose our wind in Wyoming in 2028. So this is what it looks like on an hourly basis. So this is the diversity on every single hour. The top one is your high load and the, down here would be your low load. So that's your diversity on a day-to-day basis. This would be what we classify as the Caseville barcode. So we'd be able to scan it and we'd be able to tell this was Caseville. You can see we have outages over here, planned outages on our coal-fired power plant. So then that leaves you resource, you have to buy from the power pool while those power plants are offline. This is what it looks like on a sorted basis. So you can really see, you still buy on an hourly basis from the power pool on most peaks. The best thing to shave these peaks, and we're going to talk about another project that we do, is to do energy efficiency. So anything you can do to get, to encourage your retail customers or your commercial customers to reduce their load, then you can eliminate those, the need for those needles. So this indicates anything above the zero line, you buy from our UAMPS power pool. Anything below, we would buy from you. So NIBO. So NIBO is, I know, you have 22 megawatts in NIBO and you can see that from your portfolio. We can go back, that you rely on heavily, especially in the winter. You, I mean, excuse me, in the summer, you use all 22 of your megawatts during the, during the summer peak, but then like in the spring and in the fall, you're long your resource. And since we don't always operate this project, we operate it to the market and we can show you how you do. So these are the months that you would do. Right now, here is where we can operate our NIBO power plant. You can see you didn't utilize much more than five megawatts and you almost have 22 in your portfolio. But we, since we operate it, the pool buys it. And I know Kelton just told me that about $8,000 was the credit to Caseville for the month of May because of utilizing that energy from the pool. So you do, even though you don't take it to your own load, you do get benefit from the power pool buying it. And that definitely swings depending on what the market is doing and what the cost of the market power is. So the other services that UAMPS provides, we do have a government and public affairs project. We actively work with state legislators as well as federal. We want to make sure that municipal rights are protected and we watch for anything that even if it affects a different enterprise fund, it could meld over to the, to the electrical fund. So we work heavily with the League of Cities and Towns. Then on a federal basis, we watch that pretty closely. So we're not bound on a federal basis to any legislation that takes away municipal rights. Member Services is another project that we have. We sell services. So we own subscriptions. We own joint property, joint equipment. Anything that we can save our monies, money on our members' behalf. I know you participate in our test, poll tester set. So we have multiple members and what we do is we ship it from member to member so that every member doesn't have to own that piece of equipment. And then you also participate in OSHA due trainings because we get a reduction in some of the other projects that we pay dues. This project is where we finance our individual projects, a project of one. And we also have a mobile generator that is shared with the membership and is housed at Lehigh City. We also have a resource project. This is the project that we look at all the resources. Caseville participates in this project. So if we move to a new project, your entitlement in this project would be the amount that you could take on the output. If you needed additional output and another member wasn't interested in pursuing, you can actually buy that before we go to a third party to fully subscribe a project. And we look at all projects the same regardless whether they're demand side or supply side. And we try to use a gas-fired power plant as our straw man on competitiveness. This is the other project that you participate in heavily. You're our third-largest member who participates in this. It is our energy efficiency rebates. So what UAMPS does on your behalf is we handle all of your energy efficiency. Your consumers can go online. They can see what project, what energy services that you, energy efficiency programs you participate in. And then what we do is collect the application. We check to make sure all the data's correct. We contact Caseville City to make sure that they're a customer in Caseville because we don't want to be paying a rebate to someone that's not a customer. Then we send them a check. UAMPS actually issues that check, but on the, on the check it would say Caseville City. So that you're getting recognized that you are the one that's paying that rebate. Currently, you participate in our home energy savings, which is rebates for appliances. You participate in cool cash. That one has been blossoming due to the hot weather. That's replacement of air conditioning and evaporated cooling. Participate in sear later refrigerator, but you're not currently participating in commercial lighting or smart thermostats. Those are projects that you could come into if you so desire. I kind of went over these. That's just the, so here's what the application looks like. And then you can see here, here, this one's for Weber Basin. So Weber Basin is here and then Weber Basin is up in the corner. So it does acknowledge the city that we're paying the rebate on behalf. Carbon Free Power Project, I'm not going to go over this. I did include the slides, but I know you're very familiar with it, is the carbon-free, it's our small modular reactor that we're moving forward on. And that project is progressing. And that's really, see, I did really good. See, I still have five minutes. So we won't go through these, but do you have any questions for me? How we schedule? What projects you participate in?
Counsel, any specific questions?
No.
Oh, Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. I apologize for being late. One of my first questions is, you talked about the incentives that we have for residents to increase their efficiency, the rebates. And I'm interested in looking into how we can participate in like the smart meters incentives. Do you guys have information on that?
We do. We can get it to Bruce and he can pass it on. You can actually go online to UAMS.com, go under our Energy Efficiency Program will be Smart Energy. And then it will outline how, what the rebate amounts are. And all you have to do is sign a paper, tell us the amount that you want to pay. So you, on a lot of these things, you get to determine your budget. So if you wanted to pay, you know, 5,000 against smart thermostats, then we cap it and we put that all in a computer program. And then we don't exceed that unless the city desires to go. So that can be put in your budget and you can control how many rebates that you issue.
Do you have any data that we could consult that shows the return that we could expect? I look into these all the time and it seems that there's usually about like a one to two-year investment for a resident.
I can get that data and I'll get it to Bruce. I know, and you know, none of our members, they are paying rebates at $50 per thermostat, but they are not connecting it so that they can control the thermostat at the residence level. Some of the programs and the other ones, they would actually pay, but then you would be able to control the thermostat. Caseville City would. You'd be able to tether it back. That's not the program that UAMPS, yeah, because...
We don't want that.
Yeah. So it's exactly, it's just the thought that you, you know, somebody's controlling your thermostat. You'd be hot. You know, I'd just automatically be hot because the city...
Looking over your shoulder all the time.
So we, that's not the program that our members, we just do the $50. But I'll get, we'll see if we can get the statistics. And I'm sure that there's different statistics on what thermostat they purchase.
Okay. Also, and then just the, and Bruce may be able to speak to this, but the automated meters that we're investing in, how they can connect and enable residents as well, I think is a great opportunity.
It definitely is. The AMI meters. And I told Jean I wouldn't put a buzz in this for that, but we do have a member, we do have a member conference coming up in August. It is in Logan City this year. And we will have, you know, experts talking about, you know, a lot of technologies. We have, you know, people talking about electric cars. We have people talking about regional transmission organizations, energy markets. So, you know, it's a very beneficial conference. We use it as an education platform on more cutting-edge type things that cities can move in, such as AMI meters.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson.
Do we have any members in the system that do time of use, like fee structures or no?
We have several members that have looked at it. The best thing, what we like to do is I can send out an email for Bruce and then we'll just say, you know, Caseville is interested in, do you have time of use and how it works? And then he can gather who does that type of meter, of rate structures, and then he can pull the data for you. UAMPS is a service base. We like to provide a lot of member autonomy, as I indicated. So we let people, we don't try to get into that rate structure. We have lots of consultants that we can pass you on if you want rate studies. But so, but member to member, they share a lot of that information with each other so that, you know, city councils can gain from that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else?
No.
Jackie, thank you so much.
You are welcome.
Appreciate it.
I'm happy to come anytime.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks so much. All right. We will now adjourn as city council and reconvene as the Caseville City Redevelopment Agency. And we need to talk about adoption of a resolution, adopting the budget for Caseville City Agency for the fiscal year 2019. Do we, who's going to introduce this? Do we need to talk about this at all?
I don't know if we do.
Okay.
If you want Dean to just sum up what we did last time.
All right. It hasn't changed since last time.
Hasn't changed. Okay. So this is the redevelopment agency and you have one item of business. And as you mentioned, Mayor, it's the adoption of the resolution adopting the budget for the Caseville City Redevelopment Agency. And the budget proposed this year is revenues of $135,000 and expenditures matching at $135,000. And that revenue is tax increment money coming into the agency. And the expenditures include professional services of $25,000 and interfund loan payment of $110,000. So the action tonight is to adopt that resolution.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any questions that have come up? All right. I will entertain a motion on this item. Councilmember Page.
Okay. Well, I move that we, what was it? We approve the...
Resolution 18-6.
A motion. Wait a second. I've lost my screen.
I think it's Resolution 18-6-2.
Okay. Yeah, I move that we adopt the resolution adopting the budget for Caseville City Agency for fiscal year 2019, Resolution 18-6-02.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Page and seconded by Councilmember Hanson. Let's start with any comments. Now, Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
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 And Councilmember Garn?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
The motion passes 4 to 0. Okay. All right. Now like to close the Caseville City Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. We will now convene as the Caseville City Municipal Building Authority Board. We went through this last week. So we have a resolution here.
Mayor?
Yes.
We might be two minutes early on that one, if you just wanted to wait.
Okay. So we will hold for two minutes.
Okay.
Unless you have a watch that says 6:50, then I'm good.
I've got 6:50 on my...
You really?
Really, but it's three minutes fast, so.
And you know that.
Yeah.
And I just want to make folks aware that we do have Councilmember Garn on the line. So he is participating in this meeting.
I'm going to say that's close enough. All right. Yep, there it is on my watch. All right. Okay. I would like to convene the Caseville City Municipal Building Authority Board Meeting. Now, we are looking at the adoption of a resolution amending the budget for the Caseville City Municipal Building Authority for fiscal year 2018. And also the adoption of a resolution, adopting the budget for the Caseville City Municipal Building Authority for fiscal year 2019, which is Resolution 18-6-0. Okay. So do we need to say anything about this? Has not changed from last we met. All right. Okay. Any questions from counsel on this? Okay. In that case, I will entertain a motion for Resolution 18-6-03.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution, 18-6-3.
That's very good.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Barber and seconded by Councilmember Page. Any questions? None. Okay. Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Garn?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes 4 to 0. Okay. I will now entertain a motion for the adoption of Resolution for 18-6-04.
Well, I move that we adopt the budget for Caseville City Building Authority for fiscal year 2019, Resolution 18-6-04.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Page and seconded by Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Garn?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes 4 to 0.
Can you hear that? Sorry. Aye.
Yes. We got you. Thank you, Councilmember Garn. Okay. We will now adjourn as the Caseville City Municipal Building, Municipal Building Authority Board. And we will reconvene at 7 for our city council meeting. will reconvene at seven for our city council meeting. Okay, I think Councilmember Hanson and Councilmember Barber were ready to start again. All right, I'd like to call our June 19th city council meeting to order. We'd like to recognize that Councilmember Jake Garn is with us via phone, but he will not be able to provide us our opening. So, he could, but it would be kind of difficult. So, we have asked Councilmember Page if he will do our opening for us.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful that we could be here tonight as a governing body of Kaysville to discuss issues and to talk about the things that are important, and especially the budget and other things that are important to the citizens of Kaysville. We're so much, we're so thankful for being in this situation that we have, for the peaceful environment, the great country we live in, and a wonderful city that we have. We ask you that thou would be with us in all that we do, that thou would bless our, the employees of Kaysville and strengthen them, and bless them to make good decisions and be of benefit and serve the people of Kaysville. We ask you now that thy help would be with us, that our minds will be open, we'll be able to discuss in a good and rational manner and accomplish those things that would be to the benefit of the citizens this evening. And we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay. Councilmember Barber, could you give us the pledge? Thank you so much.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The first item on our agenda, we're going to have a presentation by Rick Smith on talking about Davis and Weber County's canal. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I think there's a PowerPoint waiting for Andy. Okay. First of all, I want to thank publicly Andy Thompson is actually one of our board members, and I appreciate all of his work and service on that board as well. Just kind of give you an outlook of current water year. I think some of you went on the tour with Weaver Basin recently, but the 2017 water year, as you well know, was a pretty good snowpack, a lot of water. We filled every reservoir and even spilled throughout the whole watershed. As you watch January through now, you can see how the snowpack was basically 60% or less this whole winter time period. And so, one is just kind of like, this is what the current situation is. The biggest positive this year is that because we had so much water last year, we didn't completely empty them, and so, we had good carryover. As you can see, on June 8th, we actually started tapping into our storage instead of using just natural flow out of the Weaver River. So, which is actually a month earlier than last year. So, I'll kind of give you a hint of, we're now drawing on storage, so it's again, it's a limited resource, and a lot of people forget that, unfortunately. Even though we live in a desert, people expect we have plenty of water. Again, summer 28th, again, we're trying to encourage water conservation and just use our water wisely throughout the summer. Again, as we save water each year, that helps us the following year. Who knows what this next winter is going to bring? That's our biggest concern, as the bottom says. If we have the same water year, we may not fill the reservoirs. So, Echo Reservoir was shy of filling this year by about four or five inches, and then East Canyon was worse than that. But again, that was the positive, is actually, we actually had good storage, but depending on how the winter goes, we'll see how next year goes. Some recommendations, we always recommend just kind of wise water use. Again, watering, adjusting water schedules. A lot of people, or some people, turn on their sprinklers day one, and it's the same cycle they use in July and August, every other day or every third day, from April 15th all the way to October 15th. What we're saying here is adjust that early on in the year, maybe it's every fifth day or sixth day, depending on the weather. Then you can fill a little bit more often as the summer goes, which we're now starting to hit that 90 degree plus weather. And again, adjusting with the sprinklers. If it rains, we try to encourage people to turn it off. One cycle roughly is 3,000 gallons on an average lot, so it does add up real quick. And then, again, do not water every day. It's easy to say that, but some people still do that, and sometimes maybe twice in the same day. Another one, adjust sprinklers so we're not watering our sidewalks, our driveways. Again, just kind of thinking that, how do we save water in general? And then lastly, again, using drip systems around flower beds versus the overhead sprays that sprays everything. Like in my yard, you don't want to spray the weeds, right? You want to get the water to the actual bushes and flowers. And, I don't know, it got cut off, but this is actually the meter readings for last, what is that, seven years, here in the Kaysville Southwest Layton area. And we even questioned some of the Kaysville East Reservoir meter readings. We're actually going to replace that meter probably this upcoming year. But if you look at that, there's a lot of water. Acre feet is basically one acre of land with one foot of water on it. That's what an acre foot is. So, just over 4,700 acre feet in Kaysville. And I never should, oh. Sorry, it's not coming across. Let me tell you how much, how many gallons that is. Not sure why it's not showing up. Just over 1.5 billion, with a B, billion gallons of water is what we delivered just this last year in 2017. So, that's a lot of water. I think gallons is always easier for people to understand versus acre feet. The history of Davis-Weber County's Canal Company serving secondary water in the city. Back in 1988, actually, early 80s, the canal company realized that growth was happening since the urban residential suburbs were coming in and agriculture was going away. So, they actually kind of looked forward and said, all right, we need to start converting the water from an ag use into residential, you know, lawn and garden type of use. So, back in 1988, the Board of Water Resources authorized funds to start that and fund those large, you know, multimillion dollar projects. And in 1989, that's when Kaysville started, actually, the city was kind of the main, sorry, main sponsor. They were doing the distribution system throughout the city. Actually, the northern part were kind of basically the top two-thirds of the city, if you kind of look at the map of secondary water providers. And then Davis-Weber is going to provide the transmission from our canal down to either the Kaysville irrigation reservoir or to the system itself. And then, and the original plan was actually to provide water to the Kaysville irrigation reservoir. Everyone knows where that is. It's north of the cemetery, south of Pointon Road. It's kind of tucked away there, a lot of people don't know it's there. So, the original plan was to put water in there and then gravity feed that to the west Kaysville, and then also up by the Vita Course, the Kaysville East Reservoir is just north of the debris basin that the county has there. And again, a lot of people don't know it's there because it's further north than most people venture off to. And then in 1993, actually, the city decided to kind of basically allow Davis-Weber to have over that system as well as the debt that came with it. And so, we're now operating and maintaining that system since 1993. And then capital improvement. So, recently, we've completed a capital facility plan, similar to like a water master plan that you have here at the city, assessing how are we doing, what are the issues, how do we resolve those problems? So, right now, we're actually seeing, again, more specifically in the west Kaysville. On the east side, we have plenty of pressure because of gravity. If you can imagine, we're starting up there by the Vita Course, and we actually have to reduce the pressure as it goes down. Due to gravity, it increases the pressure as it heads west. But right now, currently, we actually have our reservoir on Church Street, which is like Lindquist Memorial, Fairfield and Church Street. That's where our reservoir is. And so, think about where that is, and we basically have four miles of pipe from that location all the way down to the west side of Kaysville City. So, right now, and there's places, and we're seeing that the differential from static, so you might see 110 PSI, but actually, when people are demanding all the water at certain time periods, it's 40 or 50 PSI. And so, we're seeing a huge swing. Again, that's head loss in the system. There's a high demand on the system, and it's just head loss is cumulative. So, four miles versus one mile pipe, there's a huge difference of that same velocity in the pipe throughout that four miles is eating up that pressure. So, probably a little more technical. Do you have questions?
I do have a question to that. So, is there a solution to that?
Yes, we're working at it.
I jumped ahead, sorry.
No, that's fine. And in that, what we're looking to is actually kind of going back to the original plan, back in 1988 time period, was actually to put water in the Kaysville irrigation reservoir and gravity feed from there. Because that was the original plan. We have a 24-inch line from our, on our Fairfield line, almost three miles of that, to Kaysville irrigation reservoir. And then we can gravity feed there, we actually have a 30-inch pipe, because again, that was the intent, was the larger flows would come from that Kaysville irrigation reservoir. So, the initial static pressure, which is what you'll first see, will actually be lower because it's a lower elevation reservoir, but the differential, instead of swinging 70 PSI, will swing maybe 10 to 15 PSI. So, that's the goal. We plan on doing those, some of those improvements this fall and winter. So, we are moving forward, I'm meeting with the engineers on Monday to work out some of those nuances and start the design process. So, we are moving forward.
All right.
Which I just said on the last bullet. I want to touch base really quick on secondary metering. Again, if you've talked to Weaver Basin, that's one of their biggest emphasis of kind of new water in their system. But for us, it kind of goes back to un-meter doesn't mean unlimited, because this is a limited resource. We don't often think that way, but with the snowpack, if it diminishes, guess what? There's no water, you know? So, we've been actually installing some meters. With all new construction, developers are putting in secondary meters. Again, that helps us account for that water better, but also hopefully educate. That's our main emphasis right now, is to educate homeowners on what they're using. So, if someone gives us their email address on a monthly basis, we'll send them a notice. If not, it's once a year because the cost of trying to send out thousands. So, 1,600 right now meters in our system. And in 2016, there was a concurrent resolution at the legislation, or legislators talked about if more citizens in Utah knew how much water they were using, they would voluntarily conserve. So, again, that's more of an education. You knew you were using, let's say, a million gallons at your house, you probably think, oh, that seems like a lot of water. So, you may curtail some of your watering or different practices. And then this last year, they actually had a Senate bill that was going to require water providers like ourselves to put meters on all secondary connections within 10 years. So, for Kaysville alone, that's roughly $6 million that we would have to invest into just putting new secondary meters in to existing connections. into just putting new secondary meters in to existing connections. So, that was a concern for us a little bit, but we don't, we're not opposed to it, it's just who pays for it and how do we do that financially in the long term? But, again, like I said, it did not pass, but we know the writing's on the wall and someday we're going to have to do that. So, we're trying to plan accordingly. Six hundred, or six hundred and fifty of those connections that we did put meters on this last couple of years, we actually had a WaterSmart grant that helped pay fifty-fifty for us. So, we are trying to stretch that dollar as well in that process. Here's an example. I don't expect you to read the numbers, but here's someone's meter report for one month. If you look at that, five out of seven days they're watering. So, just knowing that, if you look at our thing, they were about two hundred and forty percent of what they probably should have been putting on their yard. So, they're supposed to put three inches on, they were putting what, seven or eight? So, we're trying to, again, educate and then help, help people understand that this is a limited resource. Because a lot of people believe secondary water is an unlimited resource because it's a flat fee. Again, here's just another example of another report. That was actually closer, about a hundred and twenty-two percent. You can see on those different months, May, June, down here, you can kind of see, the blue is what they use and green is probably what they should have been using based on the information that Weaver Basin provided us, kind of what the uptake of those plants should have had. So, they were pretty close on most months. If you look in July, they exceeded it a little bit, but this one's actually not too bad compared to others I've seen. And here's another one, maybe not as often, and even the demand was a little bit lower. Again, depends on your sprinkler heads, your size of yard, that kind of stuff. So, they were actually below a hundred percent, which is pretty rare to find, to be honest with you. Any questions or things I can address?
Councilmember Page.
Yeah, hey, just a question, you know, flat out, how, this year, we're going to probably be okay? Do you anticipate any problems?
Problems in what?
With having enough water, I guess, or...
I believe we'll have enough water again. I should have actually emphasized on that last, on the one graph. Let me jump back there real quick.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. So, those twenty thirteen, fourteen, fifteen were really bad water years and they were, we did have water restrictions. If you also look at that, those are the years we actually used less water and also we don't ever get, usually don't get complaints about pressure, you know, issues on their system during those years, which kind of, they're tied together, right? Less demand means there's better pressure for everybody. So, so this year, I believe there's enough water again. Depending on how snowpack goes this next year, we may not even fill the reservoirs if we have the same winter that we did this past year.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We always want kind of wet springs and even some storms during the summer. Think about last year, fourteen days over a hundred, I think it was, last summer, which is not normal and we don't like that obviously, but some of the climatologists are actually predicting that it will become a warmer, drier area. We may not see the snowpack that we're typically used to.
Ouch.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
Do you foresee, I spent a few years in New Mexico and they are, they had the water police that would go around to do, do you foresee any of that happening? I mean, truly that they'd write you tickets if you were wasteful watering, watering when it wasn't your turn, not doing that, you know, like you said, every so many days. Do you foresee that or is that when it gets drastic or do we, if we can...
Two ways. One, we're a private entity, so it's kind of tricky. I'm not sure if we have policing power, if that makes sense, but we kind of maybe penalize or, you know, again, we're kind of going back to the education going, do you know that you're wasting water? Secondly, I actually attended, I think it was yesterday, Weaver Basin's doing a drought contingency plan. It should be coming out pretty soon on their website and going out to the public. But, in that discussion was, okay, if you have drought level one, two, three, yeah, when would we send out a water police type of thing? So, yeah, it'll get that way if, again, if we have really bad years or seven years of dry, dry years, that after year two or three, if there's not enough storage, then yeah, we're going to have to start doing cutbacks or water restrictions.
Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Garn, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you for asking.
Sure, okay. Councilmember Barber.
Just one question. So, I always try to think of things in consumable ways for residents to understand. And one of the questions I get a lot is people don't really understand how their secondary water is assessed to them and metered, for lack of a better term, because I know it's not that, but do you have an elevator pitch of how we charge and what they can expect?
So, right now, again, it's a base fee all year long. So, I believe you have, let's say, three hundred dollars, you just divide it by twelve and it's on your, on your monthly bill.
And so, their water comes from different areas based on which part of the city they're in? Does that impact the assessments at all?
No, we try to, again...
It's the same for everybody.
Equal pay for everybody, yeah. So, for the most part, everything, again, west of Fairfield roughly, is coming from our canal system. We have seventeen miles of canal from the Weaver River all the way down to that Layton Church Street reservoir that we're operating and maintaining. So, that's Davis Weaver shares, but also we get water from South Fork, Holmes Creek, Webb Canyon.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So, we get that water as well as off the Weaver Basin Aqueduct.
I think people are detecting the differences in where their water's coming from. Maybe the pressure is the thing that they notice differently.
In Kaysville, we actually have three different pressure irrigation providers. Davis Weaver's the biggest one on mostly the north half. We have Haight Creek through the center of town. And then the very far south end is the old Farmington Pressure where it's now called Benchland. And so, those three companies have different billing structures and different water rights and different systems. So, throughout all of Kaysville, it's not...
It's not consistent.
Take what he just said, multiply it by three to cover the whole town.
Okay, I think that's where a lot of confusion comes from, which isn't obviously from you guys.
In the case of Davis and Weaver, it's based on lot size. So, you're an annual charge and then we spread that out over twelve months. And we do the billing for Davis and Weaver, whereas we do not do it for the other irrigation companies.
Which is much appreciated, trust me.
And then my final question is, you talked a lot about education, about how much water residents are actually using. So, I'm always open to suggestions you have and how we could better, better broadcast that and educate what a difference, you know, smart watering and things like that can do.
Yeah, and we're always trying to team with Weaver Basin. Obviously, they're the big water district through here and so we always team up with them. I've been trying to provide, again, there's a new pamphlet out called Localscapes, again, for new construction or even existing homes, saying, all right, do you have a hundred percent sod grass in your yard or do you want to use the grass for entertainment and then you have a garden, you have other things that eat up some of that square footage, so you're not watering the entire quarter acre, half acre lot?
Yeah. And one thing I'd mention is something that the city is doing is, I think we're reposting, I don't want to say an infographic, but something that says, this is how many irrigations you should be doing this, this week.
Yeah, the state has them.
Yes, it's the state.
And they're funny.
Yes, and they are very funny.
They are great.
So, they come out on Friday and we will repost those on Friday. So, if, and sometimes I give my husband a hard time because I will have just reposted that and he was watering for the third time, like, you can't do that!
Well, I'll put actually shameless plug in too for the state of Utah, Division of Water Resources, and it's called utahwatersavers.com. You can actually get on that website and find one of those weather-based smart controllers and you can purchase that and you can get fifty percent reimbursement, up to a hundred and fifty dollars. So, we're encouraging those weather-based systems. A lot of them now are, you can actually control with your phone, saying, all right, it's raining, I'm going to make sure it turns off, or it's already sensed it and it's shut itself off. So...
And say that again.
Utah, utahwatersavers.com.
Okay.
Again, if you go to the Division of Water Resources website, there's, on their water conservation, you'll find that there, as well as our website. We try to make sure we're pushing out that information as well.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much for coming and if we have any follow-up questions, we'll track you down. How's that?
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, do we have any conflicts of interest?
No.
On anything, no? Okay. We will now move on to our consent agenda. Anybody have anything they want to pull off consent tonight? Okay. One thing we do need to remove, the May third minutes.
Okay.
So, I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, well, Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent items, but we eliminate item number B, the May third.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Page, seconded by Councilmember Barber, and we are starting with Councilmember Garn.
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes four to zero. And I will just mention that in our consent items, we have appointed new planning commissioners. We are reappointing Josh Sandloff and appointing Wolf Summercorn, who's in the audience. So, thank you very much for being here. Okay, now we'll move on to our action items. A, let's go with Shane.
Mayor, City Council, we're here at this time to adopt the modified tentative budget. This is the, we made some of the tweaks that we talked about last meeting after we got some council from you, we appreciate that. This would be the budget as we go through the truth and taxation process that we would initiate on July first. So, we would start with this budget and then I believe that anything could legally be changed between July first and that first meeting in August, but we'd anticipate mostly looking at that truth and taxation portion. And if you've, if, I think Mr. Story gave you all a little sheet of paper that outlined those, highlighted those things that we've changed. I think the major thing to think about there is the truth and taxation portion. We would advertise at that keeping the level the same and I think we can go anywhere from there down to whatever the certified tax rate the county assessor would give us. So, we're here for questions. I think there's going to be a little bit of discussion tonight. There's some, still some outstanding issues and we're here to help.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we would have a public hearing. Nobody has signed up for the public hearing, so we'll go on to council comments, questions, questions, council questions. All right. Been through this, any questions at this time? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Hanson.
So, this is, we're about to adopt this, so this is where we need to get any questions left over, correct?
Correct. That, this is now, yes, absolutely. You got it.
I've been waiting. No, the only question after I've had discussions, I, it was just on the fee schedule for our new road fee, I think that's the only thing. And the only thing I just had a question on, sorry to breathe in there, is on the church, what would it cause us to drop the church slash school portion? I'm sorry to catch off the top, but that's the one question I have. What are we...
Shane, do you have an amount?
Do you have that number off the top of your head?
The public...
I've got it because I texted it to Councilmember Page today, but...
Now, this would be all public use, so it would include churches, churches and schools. With the rate as proposed, it would produce revenue of about ten thousand dollars per month. It's about a hundred and twenty thousand a year for all churches and schools. And the rate would be four fifty per thousand square feet. So, if you have a, you know, a church at, I don't know what they are, maybe ten thousand square feet, it would be forty-five dollars per month.
So, if, that's my only item of concern, but if we pull that out, we've got to come up with that difference somewhere else, correct?
Right.
Yes, I think, I think it's a small enough number. I think one of the concerns that we have just generally would be some of the legal, trying to produce a document that could be, that would go without a challenge. And I think as we, one of the directions we've received, and maybe Mr. Mills can talk about this a little bit, but the, when you remove something, if you have something, some, another category, make it up, is really where I think we are opening ourselves up for a challenge. If we just remove something, I think we're on solid ground. So, if you want to just say, this is what we, we started at two million dollars, if you remember that in our very first proposals, and what we were recommended at that time was, I think we're hitting the businesses too hard, let's cut that in half, but we didn't, we didn't add others to make up that difference. We just said, let's just take in less money. So, I think if we take in less money, if we, if we, I don't know if we know what the difference between the church and the school and that one hundred and twenty thousand dollars is, but let's say it's half. If we just say, let's do without that sixty thousand dollars because we don't believe that we should be charging the churches for this, then I think we're on solid ground from a, from a, from a challenge perspective. I think making it up puts us out there a little bit.
And I'm, and I'm sorry, I guess what I meant by that is more where else in the budget, if we want to keep the same funding level for roads. So, I, okay, I didn't mean to add another category or...
And to answer that question, I think it's, if it's sixty thousand dollars, I think anything that we've been talking about is fair game. It's probably not something that we would recommend we do as just a one-year appropriation, but, you know, we've tried to throw a lot at roads. You know, that's not somewhere we'd probably recommend, but I think we'd have to think about it more if you're talking about the staff coming up with sixty thousand dollars. We can do it though.
I thought it was a hundred and twenty.
Well, if you do just churches or just instead of schools, and I'm making the sixty up, it's probably not sixty, sixty, but something like that.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah, and I, I know this isn't the reason I'm even asking for this, just as you look down, road usage, that's the one I'm having the biggest problem with, is, you know, use fee, because our citizens are going to the church. Now, schools, we have buses and they're putting buses, you know, they're affecting our roads, but the citizen's already been charged a fee and it's just, you know, it's almost like they're being charged again through their donations. That's my only worry, that I'm not seeing the matchup on that grouping.
But it...
Councilmember Barber, good job.
Right? But, it's the residents that are using those facilities, so it's not a broad assessment to everyone, it's those that are using their specified churches.
Right, and who goes...
So, that's where it is tied back to use.
Councilmember Hanson.
I'm sorry, yeah. I...
But, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
So...
Oh, Councilmember Garn.
Are we still in the question phase or is this also the time for discussion?
I think this is question phase.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I have no questions.
Okay, good deal. All right. Any other specific questions?
Not for you.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, so now I would entertain a motion for, to adopt this, all right? And then we'll have discussion.
I move for adoption of the Kaysville City Modified Tentative Budget for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and the adoption of the Kaysville City Consolidated Fee Schedule, Resolution eighteen six dash oh five.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Garn and seconded by Councilmember Page. Now, we have discussion. Councilmember Garn, did you want to say anything at this point?
Yeah, I think just with regard to the road fee schedule, this is a, is a difficult thing because in some ways it's new, but in other ways we're preserving the tradition of how roads have traditionally always been paid for, and that's through user fees and of course, on some of the major highways, federal funding. But, as far as the local funding model, that has been largely until very recently, when the sales tax increment was passed by the legislature and then adopted by some counties, including Davis County, they took a portion of sales tax. But, prior to that, it was primarily tied to the fuels tax, which is an approximation of use. And of course, as more and more cars are electric and better, more fuel efficient, then the legislature has tried to make some modifications to that, but it still is very inadequate for most every municipality in the state. So, municipalities are looking for other ways to fund the difference, the gap, in order to maintain roads and keep costs low by doing maintenance on roads. So, that was the whole approach. And so philosophically, it's typical because we're at a junction, and I think there's some in the legislature who, who don't mind using general taxation, forcing municipalities to use property tax or sales tax in order to pay for roads. I personally feel that that's a mistake. I think that the use model should stay there, I think that the data will get better and better as far as usage. And in fact, we do have another enterprise fund, the Stormwater Fund, which is similarly based on an estimate. In the case of the road fee, we're estimating based on an average number of trips. And if you, if you take the philosophical approach that I am, that you want to keep the tradition of the user fee and not go to a general tax to pay for roads, then it makes sense, just as we charge schools and as the municipality providing electricity and water and storm drain, et cetera, charges. Every organization, including places of worship, nonprofit organizations who have a facility, businesses, and schools for electricity and water, in my philosophical view, I guess, and also based on tradition, that is a user fee. And although we can't have an exact amount, as if we're metering water, we can have an estimate. And for that reason, I feel okay about, you know, implementing this road user fee.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Page, did you have something?
Just a short one. You know, I, I mean, this, especially with the road fee, I mean, it's not perfect. And I mean, we've talked about this for, gosh, many months. And I don't think that there's a city in Davis County or even in the state of Utah that spent as much time as Kaysville did on bringing this forward and getting the people involved and talking about it. And I, you know, in my opinion, I think that, you know, as time goes on, you know, it'll be tweaked and we could figure out better ways of, and fairness and everything else. And I, and I think that, I actually think this is probably the best of all the bad options and, and, you know, time will tell. And I mean, we've made a commitment as a council to the citizens of Kaysville that we'd review this every single year, and if we find that parts of it's extremely unfair, then that'll be a discussion that we can talk about. So, I'm actually believe that this is probably one of the best funding mechanisms that we can do to utilize and direct this money in a way that we don't have to worry about it going to other services, and the people know that when this is paid, it'll be paid strictly for our roads. And that's, to me, that's a, that's a great benefit.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hanson, anything?
I'm, I'm fine with the fee. I'm just, again, the only part of, and for all the reasons said, I agree with it and I like it, it's just that, still the church's part I'm having.
Sure, a little bit of heartburn on.
Yeah, and when it comes time, can I ask a procedural question?
You, I think you can ask that now if you'd like.
If, how would I make a friendly amendment, adopt a budget but just drop that portion?
You could do that right now, if you would like.
Offer a substitute motion.
Okay, I offer a substitute motion then to adopt the budget and the fee schedule, Resolution 18-6-5, with just dropping the church portion on the fee. That's the only thing.
Okay, then we would need to have a second. Okay.
I tried.
You did. Motion dies for lack of a second, but well done. All right. Any other comments?
I think.
Councilmember Barber.
Because when we look at this from the very beginning, I remember even when I was campaigning a year ago, and they were beginning discussions about this, we heard this overall number that we had to attain, I think it was still in like the $3 million range that we needed to match. And I'm really proud of our residents and our city staff and council that looked at it and saw, what do we really need and what, what's that sweet spot between fixing the problem, maintaining and setting us up better for the future? So, it looks like, I was trying to find the actual breakdown, but the city is matching 1.2 million, that's been unprecedented ever before that we're coming up with, from all the, everywhere we could pull it from the budget. And that's just for one, this year, this fiscal year, hopefully we can maintain that. And then that's being about matched by the resident, resident public use and businesses. Is that correct? Is that about the breakdown we're looking at?
1.05 from the road fee, but yes.
1.05 from the road fee, 1.2.
We get about another 1.2 from the.
From the city.
From Class C.
Yeah, and then 1.1 from the Class C, which won't increase, if anything, it'll probably keep getting chipped away at the state level. So, I, I feel like that is such a better breakdown than where we were a year ago, thinking we're going to put all this on, a huge portion on businesses, about the same on residents, and, you know, try to go from not maintaining to this much higher level. So, I think the fee is at a good point, the numbers. I think the only thing I would change is maybe the allocation, maybe a year from now, how we're distributing them. But I think that number we found was pretty, pretty spot on.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Councilmember Garn, anything else? No?
Oh, I did have one more thing.
Oh, let's go, Councilmember Hanson, then Councilmember Barber.
This is, this is just talking to our auditor and talking to Dean, just some, and this is just general thoughts going forward and our budgeting, just don't forget, and maybe it's the fire truck issue, you know, we've talked about, should we, and I think the fire truck's fine, but we can always have them, we do have the ability to save up for things ahead of time instead of, so just think about that as we're planning the future and we have excess, we can always save up then purchase. And I don't know if we've used that option very much. I think the need for the truck is now, and the lease is our current option, but for future expenditures, just, again, I'm not going to be, but future councils can think of that. So, it's a good option we have and we, and we're allowed to do that correctly. I'm saying the correct thing, right, Dean? I mean, if it's for a capital purchase, you can set aside monies that are reserved for that. I'm just doing the, saving up and paying off rather than leasing and having the interest expense, just some thoughts.
Okay, thanks. And Councilmember Barber?
Two. The first was on the road fee. We had talked about this, I think specifically with businesses, and I don't have the proper accounting term, but tying an increase to the sales tax and rate of inflation so that it would grow, the road fee would grow on its own to match. I know that we didn't do that, but it's maybe something that we could look at. That way we could account for increases in costs, so maybe to come. And then the second thing was on, especially the fire budget item, I know I was having a lot of questions, I got a lot of questions from residents, which I appreciate, I think is good. And I also wanted to propose, maybe we wait a year before starting that capital, you know, expense and starting that new lease, we could save, like Councilmember Hanson's saying. But in that case of the new fire truck, I think the expense of waiting, especially because it puts us out an extra year, plus the cost of inflation, in this case, I feel comfortable with, with going forward with the lease. So, I think we exhaustively looked at that option for this case, but I think it's a great one going forward.
Well, and we appreciate the time and effort that our council members have put into really digging in and looking for other options and, and trying to make sure that the monies that we are spending are well-spent. And we don't have.
Mayor Witt?
Yes, Councilmember Garn.
Yeah, I apologize, I can't raise my hand, so.
It's okay.
Would it be all right if I made one more comment?
Absolutely, go for it.
Thank you. And first of all, let me agree with both Councilmember Hanson's, Hanson and Barber regarding the comments they made, but just to add to that a little bit, it's always, devil's always in the details, so as you get into making the calculation of what is actually the least expensive way to accomplish the, the need or deliver the service that we've decided is essential for our citizens, sometimes it really is actually less expensive. And by the way, saving, I certainly agree with that, you've got some parameters there that you can save up to 25% I think of, of your budget, and it can't drop, surplus can't drop below 5%. So, that's the range in which you operate. So, yes, you can save up for some things, perhaps not every expenditure, but also during a time of super-low interest rates that we've had and we may be coming out of, so maybe our thought process should change and appreciate direction from our, also city management as well on these issues. But sometimes the cost, for example, of a lease, depending on the quality of the lease, could be less expensive than saving simply because your inflation rate, for example, and the cost of construction, one of the reasons we're moving forward on road construction quickly is because those costs tend to go up faster than the general inflation rate, and in many cases, faster than the discount rate on a lease, for example. So, I would just make that caveat that in general, I agree with the sentiments expressed, but you also have to be careful to look at the details.
All right, thank you. I, I did just remember that as part of passing this modified tentative budget, we also need to tie with it the date whereby we are going, the date that we're going to have truth and taxation. And if I could recommend August 7th, which is a Tuesday, because my family's leaving on vacation on the 8th.
We see how it is.
I, I'm trying to shoehorn this in, the vacation.
Does it have to be a separate time?
No, it does not, but it has to be in between the 4th.
After the 4th.
After the 4th and.
Prior to the 17th.
And prior to the 17th.
How long does it, how does it usually happen? And what type of format is it?
Dean, could you speak to that?
I'm sorry?
How, how many?
The format for the truth and taxation?
Yeah.
Is it a presentation? Is it a discussion?
The only requirement is that you hold a truth and taxation hearing for the purpose of raising your, your certified, your tax rate above the certified tax rate. And you set the notice date in August, that allows proper notice and publication in the newspaper, and also provides notice on individual tax notices, preliminary tax notices that are sent out by the county. So, we, we inform the county of the date and time of the hearing, and then they will send out a notice indicating, you know, what the difference is, the additional revenue, the additional tax for that individual, and, and the hearing date and time.
Okay, thank you. So, Councilmember Garn, I believe you made the motion correct for the adoption of this resolution, is that true? Did, yes?
He did. Do we need to talk about that date? Do we need to fix it? Or can we do that later?
We do need to set that date.
I don't know if you need to do that by motion, Dean, do you know?
Do you know?
No, I think the action tonight is this motion here, but we do need to know so we can notify the county in the next couple of days when that hearing will take place.
And that night is power commission, so we just need to meet our.
Well, can we talk about that during calendaring at the end of the meeting?
Yes, let's do that. All right, that sounds good. But.
So.
I really pushed for the 7th.
And I'm not pushing for the 7th, so we'll see how it goes.
I don't know. All right, okay, so we've, we've had a motion, a second, I think, are we ready to vote on this? Yes? Okay.
So, what, this is.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, the adoption of.
This.
The budget that will go into effect in August.
In July 1st.
July 1st.
July 1st.
August is just the, just for the truth and taxation?
Yes. I, you, I think in legally, you could change anything in the budget between those two things, but we are going to start operating July 1st with the new budget, so.
Okay.
If we buy something and then you want to take it away, that might get sticky, but we'll try not to buy anything expensive after August.
Maybe just a point, after the truth and taxation hearing, you will have to adopt a final budget, so that will be an action in August as well.
That will be our second meeting in August.
And what we're trying to focus on is what you want to do with the truth and taxation portion. It may not change, we may have the exact same budget we have today, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, we're ready to vote, and we're going to start with Councilmember Barber.
Aye.
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 And Councilmember Garn? Okay, unanimous vote for the budget. Thank you very much, passes 4 to 0. Okay, Nick Mills, please.
Mayor Witt, members of the Kaysville City Council, it's good to be with you tonight. I'm here to present a resolution that would authorize the city to acquire a temporary construction easement from Brett and Rebecca Bass. They're part of the Angel Street project that we've had underway for some time now, and we have, city staff has been in negotiations with the Bass family and have reached a negotiation that we feel is mutually beneficial, and we just ask that you authorize that this evening. Available if you have any questions on it.
Okay, thank you. There is nobody signed up to speak to this item, so we'll move on to council questions. Any questions on this? Councilmember Hanson?
Just on the amount, is everybody, does staff feel comfortable, and the Basses, I guess, feel comfortable with that amount?
Yeah, we do. It's, I think, higher than was originally anticipated, but based on kind of how the projects progressed, I feel like, count, staff, staff feels comfortable with that number.
Okay, thank you.
Can I answer that, too? Just, I think it's probably less than what the Basses would like, and I think it's more than what the city was like, and to me, that means we're in a good place.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilmember Barber?
Thank you. Just the question of what this contract ensures as far as completion of the project for that portion?
Yeah, it ensures that we can finish the project through the south end of the Bass property.
And I didn't see any dates or times associated with it, it's just the ability to?
Correct. It allows us an easement on that property to construct the pi, the improvements, I should say, until such time as we finish the project. And at that point, the easement would be extinguished, the construction easement, we couldn't go back and use that same easement, we'd have to acquire a new one.
Okay, so we pay, we settle this contract now, we pay them for the opportunity in the future.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Any questions, Councilmember Garn?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Okay, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the temporary construction easement for the Brett and Rebecca Bass property.
Do you want a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Councilmember Barber and seconded by Councilmember Hanson. Any comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
I'm surprised, I'm noting that the Bass family isn't here tonight, but I want to represent, or not, maybe not represent them, but speak to this project and the difficult path that it has been on to come to this point, and I think it speaks volumes for those property owners that were to this point and for the city that we've worked together on this agreement. I, I am so thankful for them and for the way that this all came about. I hope that this improves their ability to move on from this and have a good relationship with the city and their beautiful home that they have there, so very appreciative to them and to city staff as well.
I will say that they did speak to me about needing to be here this evening, and I told them they didn't need to be here, they have already signed the documents, so.
Sorry, that, my only thought of them not being here is I just wanted to say about how much we appreciate them, so.
Right. Okay, let's go to a vote. Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Garn?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 4 to 0. All right. Okay, we're moving on to our work items now. Now, we'd like to hear from Dan Adams with the Langdon Group on the old library update.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. It's really good to be here. My name's Dan Adams, and I work with the Langdon Group, and we work all over the West, and my office is just off of 200 North, and this is so fun to be worky-local today, so happy to be here. The, I originally met with the mayor, and we talked a little bit about the library, and we talked about what are some ideas about, what do we do with the library? And so, one of the first things that I've done is gone and met with the city council, I met with all the council members but one. And so, what I'm going to do tonight is just report back on what I've heard and talk a little bit about some ideas for next steps. So, what I want to start with is, there was basically 20 key themes that came out from these interviews, and they were, were commonly held by, by just about everybody. And so, what I think is important is I share these with you, is they feel like they're the basis of the story that we need to tell, to be able to, as we go forward and we talk about the library, so we'll talk about that a little bit more, but if you think about it a little bit in those terms. So, probably the number one and most important thing we heard was about the strong desire to maintain heritage and to respect and honor the history and those community values that Kaysville has. So, whatever is done, whatever that looks like, that clearly is a very strong desire. Some of the other things that we heard that tied to that were having a place for LeConte Stewart art. There was also. There was also some comments about wanting to have a place, a museum space, and that whatever is done, could that also accommodate a new museum space? One of the thoughts that came with that too was that a lot of the artifacts from the community are in Leighton and it'd be great to have those things here locally in Kaseville. Some of the common things we heard about the library structure that currently exists is about mold in the building, about the eaves of the roof not extending over, about water running down, about water running down walls, and that there is also seismically that there's all kinds of insuring and unique challenges with the existing structure. We also heard about a desire to educate youth in the community, to help young people to learn more and understand about the culture and those values and get them engaged in the community. There was also sentiments about having a place in Kaseville that's a community gathering place, that there is a desire throughout the whole country, that people want to have a sense of connection and a sense of place. And a question about where is that in Kaseville? And could whatever's done here help accommodate and help provide that sense of place? One of the other things that was talked about a little bit was about parking and whatever's done, how do you accommodate or make it a place that people could easily access with parking? Some guidance about public engagement, about how do we engage the silent majority, a lot of folks that just don't really come get engaged in Kaseville. And then there was also this part about conflict resolution that whatever's done as we do engagement is to not increase conflict and use it as an opportunity to in fact decrease conflict. There was examples shared about the old scout cabin and about the process with the police station and a desire to avoid some of the conflicts and maybe some lessons learned from those two structures. It seemed like just about, everybody also talked about build out of Kaseville and that it's not that far off. And so as we think about these structures, thinking about being able to accommodate the needs of the city, not just today, but also in the future as you reach that build out. There was also a number of comments about having an active downtown was one of the words, ways it was described about, again, it kind of ties to that idea of a sense of community, but also thinking beyond just the library to think about the space around it. So as you think about a downtown, there's comments that the movie theater attracts a lot of people, but there could be a lot of benefits to other businesses or other businesses you might be able to attract, so people could have that sense of community in a downtown. We, some of the folks talked also about the moving of the economic centers with the close of the grocery store, the fresh market, the expansion, some of the developments happening further west. What will that look like in the future? There was also some comments tied to the widening of 200 North and a future interchange out with West Davis corridor, so it kind of increased the desire to look at how do we work on that downtown community center and that center on the east side. There was also, everybody talked about some polarization tied to some members on the council and that we got to find ways that we can work together effectively, and I've got some ideas I'm going to share with you about that. Let's see, there's also some questions about truly how historically significant is the current biz around that. There is, there was also, I don't think anybody is coming into this process saying, man, I hate that building, let's get rid of that library building. There's a thought about can we keep it, is it possible? But also is it feasible? And the council members I interviewed want to gather information and be pragmatic and be practical about that. There was also, it was kind of interesting that folks would also talk about kind of the conflict around the library and keeping it isn't so much maybe around the building and about this iconic library as it is, this desire to protect and maintain that sense of culture, community, heritage and those values. A lot of people in their mind, they're still picturing this as an agricultural community and they don't really love the idea that it's a bunch of houses now. Okay, so that was some of the feedback that we received. One other thing I may add to that is kind of this idea of thinking beyond just the library and thinking also about the opportunity that this, that the library presents for the city of Kaseville to be able to work on those things, about building trust with community, about using this as an opportunity to work together collaboratively with the older generation in Kaseville that might have some, be a little bit bugged by all the change. How do we engage those folks? How do we engage the new people that are moving here and help increase that sense of community? So there's a real true opportunity, I think, in how we address the library. Okay, any questions about that so far?
No.
Okay.
All right.
It's super exciting, huh?
All right.
Okay.
It is.
So then there was, we talked a little bit about what do we do with the library? And there's, I think, a number of ideas there about repurpose the building, remodel the building, keep it where it's at, move it, keep some of the rockwork from it, the idea of could we have a space that could be rented? There's all kinds of ideas that just in meeting with four council members, that there's a ton of ideas. So I think this idea also is that there's a potential here to be creative and creative problem solving. There were approximately 23 additional people identified as other people that we could go interview and find out their thoughts and ideas about the library. So that's maybe a discussion we can have, I don't know if we need to do it tonight, but if that could be a next steps action item is for us to go and maybe broaden that scope beyond the city council of folks to find out what do they see as some of those risks, opportunities that we could, and ideas of what we can do around the library. So I don't, maybe I can review that with the council, send you that list and we could talk about it after.
Yeah, I think that maybe what we can do is discuss that, is it appropriate to decide that via email? Is that okay, Nick? Yeah?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, all right. That's good email discussion.
That sounds good, okay. And I can send you my notes too with that.
Great.
Okay, so around this idea of next steps, where do we go from here? I kind of have it broken out into two parts. So the first part is ideas of things that the city can do, and then the other part would be where we can help the city with some communications outreach strategy. The part about the city is I do think what's key in doing this kind of engagement is having objective information, objective data. So there's kind of two parts to, actually three parts the way I look at this. There's this data substantive detail, the science, the numbers part. There's this other part that's about the process, how we're going to engage with the community, engage with your citizens. And then this third part is that part about trust and relationships. So it kind of is this idea that as we do this engagement, so much of it really is about relationships, it's about people's relationship with the city. So the first part about city tasks would be around gathering, so what objective data and information do we already have? And then is there additional information we need to get? So I think there probably is some people out there that might question some of this data. So not only is the data important, but how we gather it and who gives us that data is going to be super important, making sure that that's open, transparent and objective. So some of those things would be about what are the costs of a remodel? What would be the cost of making the building seismically safe? What are the costs associated with mold, structural improvements? There's also a question about is there a spring underneath the building? Is there water that's coming up from below? The situation with the water that comes off the roof, so if you're going to have to change the eaves of the pitch, what are the costs associated with that? What are the problems as it exists today? Also about the insulation in the walls, is there any insulation? What would that look like? There's also some comments about older buildings in the state that have been repurposed and the costs associated with that. Do you leave the shell but have to spray concrete in the middle and do you end up building a whole structure in the inside? So some of those ideas about gathering that information that, so we can just objectively have it and make it transparent and open. So that was the first part of what are those tasks that the city can do? The second part about communication and public engagement, like I said, I think making whatever we do open and transparent and that idea of relationship based, I think is going to be key. One of the thoughts we've had is about having a community virgining event. I think a lot of this is about not framing this as an either or, but framing it as what are the options? And listen to your citizens and let's hear what their ideas are. What are their ideas that would draw them to the city center like this and give them that sense of connection? So this idea is that you could have a, I think it's ideal to do when it's warm outside where you haveites of community to come. We have landscape architects that work with us that can take people's concepts and ideas and draw those ideas out. There are some fun, interesting things you can do with virtual reality where people can come to put their smartphone in a phone in a frame and could look at different ideas. There's all kinds of really fun stuff we could do that could help people kind of expand the pie. One of the things I think is really important we do that is that we need to honor and engage the senior, more senior citizens in Kaseville. So we need to find those ways that we can do outreach. I don't, it's something I don't know yet, I need to do research on, but if the senior center has, a lot of cities in Utah has regular lunches that they have or different things, maybe looking at ideas as we gather this information, we format the story that we go and engage and talk to those citizens, but getting them also engaged to these public events. We talked a little bit about doing a community survey that can be done online, it can be very, very easy. One of the thoughts that came from the interviews is not just make that, you know, choose A, B, C or D, but actually having, we could use a lot of visual imagery in that survey where we could show examples of other communities that have had very similar buildings and structures and that desire to draw people to downtown. So we could, we could make it visual also where people could kind of share their thoughts and ideas, looking at other examples. The other thing I think is going to be an idea as we engage the public is this idea about prioritizing what those key themes are so that you as decision makers can kind of know what are those top priorities for your citizens. And I think as we, as we gather these ideas, but then go through a process of helping you prioritize them, I think it'll help in that ultimate decision making. Let's see here. Oh, and the, one last thing here is also this idea about a city webpage that is specific to the library. So there's ways we can, I think the key part about having that website, webpage is that we can put this story and put these images, I think, being able, a lot of people, new people probably have not even been in the old library building. A lot of people, when they think about the structural things, those mold or whatever those issues might be, let's be open and transparent, let's put those pictures out there, let people see it, kind of help them to, you know, experience it. I think we could through a webpage effectively do that. But I think more importantly, it's not just resting our heels on a webpage, but it's taking that information that we put on the webpage, our story, and we then go and share it with others. So go meet with people in the community, the senior citizens, whomever, and share that story and then get their feedback. Another idea is, would be to have a kiosk here in this, at the city hall where people that come in could see that same information that's on the website. We could also use the city newsletter and put that information, you know, not make the foolish assumption that everybody's on the internet. But again, I think it's that consistency of that same story on all these platforms is also a key. So that, that's my report back.
Great, that's a lot of, did you see me like scribbling everything? So I'll have to re-watch this and, so, so what, so next steps, so we have a to-do list as long as my arm and we want to get this done in short order.
Okay.
So gonna need some help.
Totally.
All right. Luckily, we've got good, strong councilmembers who pick up the slack. All right, so we've got our to-do list. Does anybody have any concerns with the recommendations? I'm going to start with Councilmember Garn so we don't forget you. Do you have any suggestions or concerns about the next steps that have been outlined?
No, I don't have any concerns. I think it was excellent work and very thorough and rigorous in getting all the different opinions as far as where we go forward. I don't know that there was options presented. I didn't gather that there was, you know, a particular course of action or one course of action recommended other than just next step seems to be getting a little more input from community members. So as far as that's concerned, I have my own thoughts on it, but I won't share those at this time because I don't think that's appropriate right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any, talking about, so, so we need to collect more data, objective data on costs associated with mold remediation seismic. I think we've started down that path already, so we have some of that already done. I love the idea of a community event, lots of fun ideas with that, and I think, this is my party planner over here.
On it, totally.
All right. And our city webpage, I think I've already talked to our IT staff, they don't see that there's any problem with doing that. Kiosk is a new idea, love that because folks can just come in and they don't have to be online. So that is great. Newsletter also. So all of these seem like they are doable, so, and it hits, and I like the idea of having many overlapping ways to access information, so, because I think that our, our folks, you know, they don't get information all together in the same ways and having the story be consistent throughout. So I like that. Okay, so that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Barber?
I clearly had my hand up a long time. Those, I love the objective data part on especially the cost to repurpose those things, but they'll also need to be balanced with what are the costs of building something new? What's that going to look like? And I know that's really hard, but we have to have both. And then in the community engagement, I would say we want to make sure we're getting a very broad variety, and I talked to you extensively about this, but if there's anyone listening that is particularly interested, reach out to us. We would love to hear your thoughts as well.
Yeah, I do think that idea of engagement, we're going to want to think through that we have representations that's in the newer side, the, you know, the east, the west side. I think engaging different age groups, there's, we want to make sure we have a good cross-section of folks engaged like that, yeah, that'll be important.
How about over here? Anything? Councilmember Hanson?
I agree with Councilmember Barber and just that it's the same call-out, you know, I'm a save the building guy, you know, I want it there, but for those that want it saved, let your voice be known, that we need, but we need both sides, it's your idea.
Right.
All sides, not just to.
Regardless of what side you're on, come and let your voice be known, this is a great time.
And you don't have to pick a side.
That's right. It's a collaboration.
Right, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. All right, okay.
I guess maybe one thing tied to both those comments too is that's the common role we play in projects like this is that, that the community can absolutely get ahold of us. And, you know, sometimes it's easier to talk to somebody that's helping out than to talk to a council member, so of course it'd be great if people came and talked to you, but if somebody feels more comfortable to contact us. And that's something we can put on the website or this information is who they can contact. We can put your information on there and we can put our contact info and, you know, we can contact and work with people as well.
All right, that sounds great. We will continue this discussion via email for some of those nuts and bolts.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Bet, thank you.
All right, okay. Now, service line warranty program. Now, service line warranty program. Shane, do you want to do an intro first?
Let me kick this off while Mr. Lyon gets set up here. As we've interacted with the National League of Cities, this has been a program that's been brought to our attention. Mr. Lyon will talk a lot more about this in, in detail, but in a nutshell, it seems to be an insurance program for, for residents. So often we get called for water line breaks, and probably more often than not, that's a break on our side of the, of the meter. But sometimes it's not, and sometimes it's something we find and we then divulge to the resident, this is actually on your side of the meter, it's something you're responsible for. I think this program mostly ensures those, those kinds of incidents, so we would be involved with this organization in getting that kind of insurance availability to our residents. So as they get set up here, Mr. Lyon's here, he's got a 10-minute presentation and we'll be here for questions.
Okay. All right. Technical difficulties, right?
Thank you very much for having me, though, I do appreciate it.
Sure. Let's, let's take a five-minute break.
Oh.
All right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you. He's looking for a different. I've got the old type.
There's a reason behind what we do and how we do it. So, the benefits of our program, first and foremost, it helps address the public policy issues surrounding aging underground utility infrastructure. So, really, it's the same story in every city. You do your best to either maintain or upgrade the public side. It's the private side, or what the homeowners are responsible for, that's forgotten in this process. And that's where the National League of Cities actually got involved, is there are companies that offer these types of services, but they wanted one that they felt good about, that they could make available to every city and put their name on. So, really, they did the vetting for decision makers like yourselves, and we were the company that they chose to administer this program. We offer this program to a city at absolutely no cost to the municipality to participate, and it's a complete turnkey approach. So, we take care of the marketing, the billing, the claims, and the customer service. So, there's no cost to the city, and there are no public funds used in the promotion of the program either. The program also contains an ongoing revenue stream for a municipality, should you choose to participate in that. I'll be going into that in a little more detail and explain how that works, and it's something you can opt out of as well, and I'll also go over that. So, really, we look at our program as a free public awareness campaign for every community that we're in. What we do, excuse me, is we send out a letter to your homeowners that educates them as to what their responsibilities are for their portion of the lines that are on their property, and it explains to them that this is a completely voluntary program that offers them protection for their external water lines, their external sewer lines, and even their in-home plumbing. So, there's no com- participation is not mandatory or compulsory. It's entirely up to the homeowner as to whether or not they would like to participate. So, even for homeowners who don't participate, at least you as a city have been proactive in educating them as to what their responsibilities are. So, it should limit the number of calls that come into the city or to the utility saying, "I have an issue with this portion of the line," and you having to inform that homeowner that it's their responsibility, because that's usually the moment that most homeowners find out that it is their responsibility. And anybody who's taken those calls knows that it's not a pleasant call to have to inform someone. You have to deal with this issue on your own. You have to find the contractor. You have to pay for it. And, by the way, issues on the private side sometimes can quickly become issues on the public side, so you need to get this taken care of in a timely manner. So, we help to at least inform people that this is your responsibility. For those who do choose to participate, they get the peace of mind of knowing that for just a few dollars a month, they have chosen to transfer the risk of the lines that they're responsible for over to us. When they do have an issue, they make one phone call to us. We have two call centers. One is just outside of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. That's the office that I work out of. The other's in Chattanooga, Tennessee. So, both of our call centers are right here in the United States, U.S.-based. Excuse me, they're staffed 24 hours a day, every single day of the year. When they call us, we dispatch a local licensed area contractor to make that repair for them. So, that's another benefit to your community, is we do our absolute best to use local area licensed contractors to perform these repairs. We do that for two reasons. One reason, we want the money to stay in your local economy. So, when someone who's participating in our program has an issue, and we pay that contractor to take care of that issue for them, that money stays here. The other reason is local contractors, obviously, are going to be aware of local codes, and they'll know what permits are necessary in order for them to perform those repairs. So, all those repairs are going to be up to your standards and up to your codes versus somebody just trying to piecemeal something together just to get that line flowing again, which, again, can become an issue on the public side eventually. We have a very rigorous vetting process that we go through with those contractors. So, there's two ways we can go about getting a list, just to start with. Some cities know of contractors that are reputable, and they like to provide us with a list just to reach out to. You don't have to be involved in that if you don't want to. Some cities don't. In that case, we just go directly to the contractors listed in the city and start the process and asking them if they'd like to work with us, and if so, we put them through that vetting process. What that vetting process involves is we make sure that they're licensed, that they're bonded, that they're insured, that they have the proper equipment necessary to make all repairs, that they have no open complaints with the Better Business Bureau, and then we go a step further, and we administer background checks and drug screens on these contractors as well. We do that because we want to make sure that the homeowners in your community are comfortable with the folks who are coming to their homes to make those repairs. We want to make sure U.S. City officials are comfortable with who we're sending to these homeowners to make those repairs for them. I'm going to go a little bit over the coverage now and get into some specifics, so you'll know what it is your homeowners are actually receiving for their participation. I like to go over the water and the sewer line coverage at the same time, because the benefits are the same as far as what's available for the coverage and so on. So, it just kind of expedites the process rather than the repetition of going over the same type of coverage amounts twice. So, the external coverage is for the external water line, and there's also external sewer line. They're separate programs, completely separate. So, what this covers is broken, cracked, leaking pipes, tree root penetration, clogs that need to be cleared out, or even thawing of frozen external water lines, excuse me. And that covers from the point of the utility connection, which I believe here is from the meter to where the line enters the home. And on the sewer, I can't recall if it was the main. I'd have to look on the term sheet, which is in your folder, but I think it's from the main.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, again, we're educating those homeowners about what their responsibilities are for those lines. What they receive is up to $8,500 per repair incident. And that does include coverage for public street and public sidewalk cutting if it's necessary for the course of making that repair. There are no annual or lifetime limits, so there's no point at which we'll tell a homeowner, "We've spent enough on you this year," or "We've spent enough on you overall. You're done." That doesn't happen. There are no deductibles, so they have first dollar coverage. Anybody who has an insurance background or has dealt with insurance knows what that means. There are no service fees. So, we don't even charge the nominal $25 or $50 to a homeowner just for somebody to show up to assess the situation. They don't fill out any forms or paperwork. All transactions are between us and the contractor. All the homeowner does is makes a phone call. We dispatch the contractor. We take care of everything. We make payment to the contractor. Again, that call center is available 24/7/365. I like to point out, we don't do any type of long-term contracts with your homeowners. Everything is on a month-to-month basis, so no one's locked into anything long-term. They can opt out at any time they'd like. There are no pre-home inspections required. Coverage begins after a 30-day waiting period. So, really, pre-existing conditions are on the honor system. If we don't know about it, it's going to be covered. The other protection that we offer is the in-home plumbing. This is something that was actually suggested to us several years ago by some of our existing city partners, because, you know, there was coverage for the external lines, but there was nothing to cover inside the home, so that's something that we incorporated. So, this is for all water, sewer, and drain lines that are inside the home after the point of entry, and this does include lines that are embedded under a basement floor or in a concrete slab as well. What this provides is up to $3,000 in coverage per repair incident. And it's, again, broken, cracked, leaking water, sewer, or drain lines that are inside the home, or even just repair of clogged toilets. So, if you have to have somebody come out and snake that line, that's covered as well. Again, no annual or lifetime limits, no deductibles, no service fees, no forms or paperwork. And one thing I failed to mention for all of these coverages, there's no limit to the number of claims that someone can have with us in a single year either, or in a calendar year. So, some of our competitors will say you get two service calls per year, or four service calls per year. For us, it's unlimited, and that same, those same coverage amounts are available for every one of those calls. Again, no long-term contracts, et cetera, et cetera. I mentioned the revenue stream as being a component of this program, and this is something that you can choose to participate in or not. My advice is always whichever way you would choose to go, just be very transparent about what you're doing, so that everybody knows. But the way that works is the city would receive 50 cents per month per paid warranty contract. That's paid out as a royalty each January. So, for example, if a homeowner were to offer, opt into all three protections, the city would receive $1.50 per month. That is, you know, the city's funds to be able to use as they wish. So, some examples of what existing partners do, you can put it right in your general fund and use it where needed to make capital improvements within the city. A lot of cities will set up low-income utility assistance programs to help families that have trouble paying their utilities month-to-month, offset the water, a water bill if somebody has a leak, so they'll set up a leak protection program, per se. I believe, I'm not sure if Orem still does this or not, because they came on board with us before I started, but I know at one time they were donating that money to a local charity every year. So, that's kind of an out-of-the-box idea. I don't know of any other city that does that. And then some cities will use it towards their National League of Cities or their state league dues. So, it's a way to take that from being something that has to be included in a budget, and instead you can earmark this for that. A lot of cities will decline that revenue. In that case, that savings is passed directly onto the homeowner. So, that same 50 cents per month that you would receive for somebody who had the water coverage, for example, comes off of what they would pay every month. So, it's a direct savings to that homeowner. Our marketing approach, we only market by direct mail, so you don't have to worry about telemarketers bothering your homeowners. You don't have to worry about people knocking door-to-door, trying to get them interested in the business. And you don't have to worry about us bombarding them with mail either. We have a maximum of three mail campaigns that we do per year. We send out two letters for each one of those campaigns. So, we send out an initial letter, and then two weeks later, we send out a follow-up letter, which is basically, "In case you missed it, but if you already saw it, ignore," kind of thing. So, six pieces of mail per year would be sent out to homeowners. It's important that you know that we would never mail without the city's review and approval of that marketing material before each and every one of those mailing campaigns. So, what's important there is not only are you seeing the message that we intend to send, you have input on that message. So, if we provide you a letter, and you look at it and say, "Yeah, we kind of, can you say this this way, or maybe say that that way?" We're amenable to that, as long as it doesn't take us outside of the scope of our terms and conditions and what it is that we provide, we can generally accommodate that. Excuse me. The marketing in that letter clearly states that the city is not providing this program, that it's available to homeowners via a partnership with the city through a private company. It's very clear in explaining to them that the participation, excuse me, participation is always voluntary for the homeowner. So, it tells them right in there, "You don't have to do this. This is just something that's available to you if you'd like to look into it for yourself." What the city's role is in this partnership is we ask for use of the logo on the marketing material and a signature from the city. Now, we used to ask for a signature from a city official, but we've amended that, and now it would just be from the city of Kaysville. So, a city official, I mean, officials change. Sometimes city managers would sign those letters, and then they'd move on to other cities or what have you, and it would cause problems. So, now it's just city of. The reason we do this is two, really. One, it creates an economy of scale. So, that economy of scale is what allows us to offer the best benefits at the lowest price that we can. The other reason is in the name of transparency. This is something that the NLC, this is one of the reasons why they looked at us, because we do absolutely everything with the city's review and approval. So, if we don't have the partnership with the city, and we don't have the approval of the materials, those materials are never mailed to your homeowner. So, you really have control over the program. So, in the name of that transparency, the NLC requires that in order to maintain this endorsement, that we continue to operate this program in the manner that we always have. Consumers can also enroll in one of three ways. Some people just like to fill out the form that's on the letter and mail it back. You know, everything they've read, that's good enough for them. They fill it out, and they send it back. A lot of folks like to call into our call center to ask questions and do their own research before they decide to do anything. And then, of course, folks can go to the website and do some research there and sign up online if they would like as well. We currently have, actually, we're at nearly 550 municipal partners now in 37 states. In Utah, we are currently partnered with Clearfield, Orem, and Salt Lake City. So, right around this area, if I'm understanding correctly, anyway.
Orem, clearly.
And just some kind of program success and notes, I call it. Your endorsement does not equal exclusivity. So, should you decide to partner with us and make this program available to your homeowners, we don't ask you to ask other companies that offer similar-type programs to stop marketing to your homeowner. So, they still have choice. We're currently serving over 3.6 million customers. We have saved customers over 394 million in repair costs over the last three years. Just something else to throw out there, I believe, over the last three years, we've completed 1.2 million repair jobs. I think we complete a repair once every 76 seconds, so we're pretty busy. We have a 97% claim approval rating. The majority of the claims that are denied are because we don't do long-term contracts, and people simply stop paying. So, they've opted out, in essence. Excuse me, 99.6% claim satisfaction rate, which I think is outstanding. What that means is of repair jobs that we've done, 99.6% of the folks that have had those repairs completed are happy with what we've done for them. And we have a customer advocacy team that's specifically devoted to that 0.4% to make sure that we eventually get it right for them as well. Our customer retention rate is higher than most major publications in the United States, so people that have our program see the benefit of it, and they stay with it. We currently have over 1,300 contractors in our network, and of course, should you decide to work with us, we'll work to find contractors right in this area that can service your homeowners as well. And lastly, nine of every customer surveyed, they recommend the program to friends, family, and neighbors, because they believe that strongly in the program as well. Usually, that's after we've done a repair for them, then they go out and tell everybody how much money they saved. And with that, if there are any questions or comments, anything you want me to dig into a little more deep?
Okay. Questions? Councilmember Hanson?
Just, what's there?
Oh, just a second. Okay, Councilmember Garn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Whit. Just a few questions. You mentioned that there's some competition. I imagine that would be from home warranty companies?
Generally speaking, it depends on the type of company. Home Advisor, for example, doesn't do anything for external water lines. So, the water in the sewer line, that's a company that does not cover them.
Okay, and is this a, not an insurer, so there's no underwriter risk taker in the terms, in terms of an insurance company underwriting the risk?
It's considered a warranty, so what we do is a repair or a replace, and there's no, unlike insurance, there's no financial transaction between the homeowner and the contractor. So, the homeowner's not paying the contractor, and then waiting for remittance from us or reimbursement from us, as you would in insurance. We're paying that contractor directly, which I'd like to add, that's another reason why we're able to attract qualified, our quality contractors, because they know there's guaranteed payment, and they're not going to have to deal with a situation of a homeowner who says, you know, "Can we work something out here? I don't exactly have $3,000 to make this repair. Can I do some payments or something?" So...
Thank you. And last question. On indoor plumbing benefits, that's something that may damage to the home particular may be covered by a homeowner's insurance policy. How do you coordinate benefits? So, for example, if a homeowner's insurance policy was going to pay for part of the damage or repair, what would then the warranty company, through National League of Cities, cover?
Okay, typically, and that's a good question, typically homeowner's insurance doesn't cover the repair, oddly enough, but what they cover is the damage caused by the failure. So, to be quite honest with you, I mean, I would have to find out if that's something that has occurred, but to the best of my knowledge, I don't know of a time that we've ever had to coordinate benefits, because we strictly focus on the repair or the replacement of the line, whereas the homeowner's insurance will cover, you know, the damage caused by the flooded front yard or what have you, flooded basement, et cetera.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Hanson?
Just a couple of questions. First of all, I think $8,500 limit. What's the normal cost of these jobs? I mean, does people, does it go over that occasionally, and they're on the hook for that amount?
Less than 1% of the repairs performed exceed the $8,500. I don't handle the state of Pennsylvania. One of my colleagues does, and she said last year there was one claim made in the state over, or over the last 12 months, actually, one claim made in the state that exceeded that amount. And we've got very good, a very good customer base in the state of Pennsylvania. So, on the water side, typical repairs are right around the $1,500 mark. Sewer, they're generally around 800 to 900. You have more issues with sewer, tree root penetration, clogs, things like that, but those are easier to take care of. With water, you're almost always having to dig a trench. So, there are fewer water claims, but they tend to be more expensive.
Going that way, great. And then what's the monthly cost for each one? Does it depend on areas? Is it in our packet?
Yeah, and it depends on the royalty, and I just want to make sure, because I believe the term sheet that we did for you was initially based on going forward with the royalty, but that can be changed. So, in this case, based on the homeowner's responsibility for the water and the royalty, it's $5.75 per month. The sewer would be $7.75 per month, and the in-home plumbing is $9.99 per month. And then each one of those would decrease by 50 cents if you chose to opt out of the royalty portion of the program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Another question?
Councilmember Barber?
So, one question I can see residents wondering is if their homeowner's insurance covers similar things than what this is covering, is this ever usually covered by homeowner's insurance?
Not that I've encountered. Again, the homeowner's insurance typically covers the damage caused by the failure or the issue, but not the repair or the replacement of the issue itself. And in the educational information that we send out, we explain that, and then we also tell the homeowner, you know, "Check with your insurance company first before you enroll into this coverage," because if you did have some type of rider, which my experience has been, there are some companies that do offer riders for these types of things, but the coverage level is not equivalent.
Awesome. Thanks. All right.
No, my question's been answered.
Okay. You know, I heard about this at National League of Cities back in March, and for the age of the homes here in Kaysville, it seems like something that a lot of our residents might be interested in. Just so folks know, some people received something from Dominion Energy recently and didn't understand it, so wanted to be very transparent about what this is, and that it's totally opt-in, and like that. But I think I, if we decide to go forward, I think we will seriously consider participating in this. My house was built in 1880.
Probably a wise investment.
So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, for council, how do you feel about the 50 cents? Do we want to not take the 50 cents? Or the other thing we can do is, you know, leave it for now, and then when we talk about it next time, make a decision, because it's kind of all at once, right? So...
So, when we adopt, if we adopt it next week, we could say, we'd adopt it with the provision to forego the royalty or whatever we choose?
Or if we keep it, that it'd be for people who can't pay the bill, or that kind of thing.
I think I know, but I'd like to think about it a little bit, or what I want.
Okay.
I'd like to think about it for a week, two weeks.
Actually, longer, a month.
It's a month?
Yes.
Oh, so sad.
All right.
I'll miss.
Okay. So, if you're comfortable, I'd entertain a motion to move this to the action agenda for our July 19th meeting.
Yeah, so moved. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Page and seconded by Councilmember Hanson. Any further comments? No? Okay.
So, I would just say, Mayor Whit, sorry, I can't see who may be raising their hands before me, but I think it's, seems to be a win-win. It's just an additional option. You know, people can go out there in the market and assess their needs, you know, the benefits offered versus the price. It just seems like a nice option to have, thinking as a homeowner here myself, something I'd probably look into, so why not make it available to our citizens?
Yeah, thank you. All right. Okay, if we're ready, we'll start a vote. Councilmember Page. Councilmember Garn.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes four to zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it. My contact information is in those packets, so please reach out to me directly if you have any questions. I'm happy to help.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Let me see. All right. We don't have any signed up for a call to the public, so we'll go to Councilmember Reports. Community Development, anything?
Uh, I think we're okay.
Okay. Councilmember Garn, anything for Councilmember Reports?
The weather is great up in Sun Valley, Idaho.
Okay. Rub it in. All right. And Councilmember Barber?
Yep. Community Events, biggest one of the year coming up on 4th of July, we're very excited for. Look for a fantastic showing from our city council, and also our U.S. City Council, and the parade, water parade, and fireworks show at Barnes Park will be great.
Okay. Do you, how is the water parade looking?
Awesome.
Do we have entries?
We do have a few entries that have come in. We're still soliciting more, and our most notable entry from our own fire department with our very own fire truck will be there.
Oh, I'm so excited.
Which that was the first I've officially announced.
Okay, all right.
You forced it out of me, and I can't contain my excitement.
Okay, that's wonderful.
Huge thank you to our entire fire department, the chief, but every other person that's going to be working extra for us. And also a huge thank to our police department, always, for all that they do for that event, and they love it.
All right. Councilmember Hanson, anything? Okay, I have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to announce that on June 30th, we're going to be having a Police Appreciation Day evening. Information is up on Facebook and I believe on our website, maybe.
Yeah, I saw it on there.
Yes. So, basically, would love to have people come and share a snow cone with our police officers. Time is, I believe, 6 to 8? Yes.
6:30?
6:30?
6:30.
Okay. Somebody look that up for me. It's on the door. All right. I do want to announce, we will not have a meeting on July 5th, because, you know, everybody's going to be exhausted from all the efforts on 4th of July. Also, I want to announce, so we had 11 applicants for the vacancy for Councilmember Hanson's seat. We will be having the vacancy hearing next Tuesday, and it will be at the police station, because Tuesday is primary day, and this room will be in use. And I did not factor that into my calculations when I made the plans. So, the police station, the police chief very graciously offered the space, so we will be meeting over there. The public notice says 6 o'clock, but we're actually meeting at 6:30, and we're just going to have a brief social, and then 7 o'clock, we'll start with our actual interview process. And although the person will be selected that night, they will not be sworn in until July 20th, and Councilmember Hanson will serve until July 19th. So, that is what is going on there.
And that, have we decided on the streaming of that? I had a couple of questions.
We are, we are planning to stream it, yes.
Are they invite, is the public welcome to come?
Yes, the public is welcome to come, yes. So, they are welcome to come. Probably, you know, social, maybe you might feel awkward, but definitely for the interview process.
Oh, man, we're never awkward.
All right. So, so there's that. Then we wanted to, so that's my report for now, but let's talk calendaring. All right, so let's, let's talk about our truth and taxation. So, it has to be between the 4th of August and the 17th. All right.
After the 4th.
After the 4th, before the 17th. All right. And we have city council meeting on... And we have city council meeting on the 16th. So, Dean, could we potentially do it on the 16th?
You, absolutely, yeah.
All right.
You would have to adopt the final budget prior to the 17th, so you would have to adopt the budget the same night as the truth and taxation.
Okay, so that's kind of my problem, is that I want people to be able to share their opinions and for council to be able to
Look at the budget first.
think about it before they go ahead and pass it the next, in the next breath, right? So I
So is that, is it a public hearing?
It is.
So we just, like we've had the other ones, they come, as yet?
Yeah.
That was my only thought, was just to associate it with people already coming on these evenings. But that's good to know.
All right. So
And I'm out of town on the 7th.
You're out of town on the 7th.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could just put in one thought, the, the one maybe reason why it could be on the same night is, in theory, we're only gonna change the one thing, and that could be easily changed either way. I, I agree with you, I like to do things, public hearing, and then having, having time to change things and different, but with just one change, it may, it may work on the same night, just a thought.
Okay. How do you feel, council members? Councilmember Garn, do you have an opinion? Do, do you feel like we should do it earlier, or do you feel comfortable doing it on the same night as a council meeting?
I feel comfortable with the latter. Also, I do have a conflict on the 7th of August.
Okay.
But I, other than that, if, I don't really have a strong preference, and be happy to do, do it earlier as well.
Okay. So, Councilmember Barber, would you be comfortable with the 16th?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, how about Councilmember Page? Yes? Okay.
In that way, people who are coming for budget could do both. They could stay for the entire evening
Okay.
one time.
All right. So, I am absolutely fine to do it on the 16th, I just want to build in time, but if we don't feel that's necessary, then we'll not. So, do we need to have official motion to adopt it for the 16th? I think we just, we'll just, we're telling you 16th, all right?
16th at what time?
Um, how, how long do you think we should budget for that?
I'd say at least an hour.
At least an hour?
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, we can bump back a city council meeting
Absolutely.
as necessary.
It has to be after 6:00 PM.
Yeah, yeah. So, we could start at 6:00 and then go for as long as people need to talk. All right.
And Dean, can you clarify the notice that we'll be going out? The truth and taxation, you said something about, is it because we're increasing the approved rate, or exactly the wordage that we'll be going out?
The, the notice that the county sends has all the taxing entities, and what the, what the tax rate is for that entity, and what the revenue, what the revenue tax amount is for each entity, with no change in the certified tax rate, and with the change in the certified tax rate. And then the last column indicates the, the date and time of the hearing.
So it's that, it's not as much the rate that will be changing, it's that total revenue that will be adjusted?
Yeah, it's a revenue-based system, so it'll, it'll show, I, I think it may show the rate as well, though. I think it'll show our current rate, .01578, and then, well, the certified tax rate would be 1475. It'll show, it'll show the difference, yeah. Yeah.
Interesting. Just so people know what, what to expect and, and what it is.
Okay. All right.
And, and I'm sorry, and, and that'll vary from homeowner to homeowner, depending on their assessed value, of course.
Okay.
Not, not the rate, but the, the tax amount.
And when does that come out? Does it before, when you get your statements, so you know what your change will be, the property owners?
It comes out in last part of July.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And I think it's called the property tax valuation notice.
And they laugh, 'cause we always get those, and you're like, I don't know if I wanna open.
And then they send another one in November with the final amount that's due.
Okay. Good to know.
All right.